Well, Mr. Mayor asked that we have this resolution for tonight.
Yeah, so why don't we do the village business we have to do and then while we wait for the town board.
Huh?
(laughing)
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the civil, liberated, and justice of all.
No, she's singing.
I'd like, Jason, I'd like to suggest that the village board conduct a few items we have to do in the hopes that a third town board member will arrive.
That's fine.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I would like to move that the village of New Paltz Water Prestige recognize that it has received the report prepared by engineer Dave Klausa titled Phase Two Backup Water Supply Investigation.
And I will second the receipt.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Mr. Mayor.
So foremost, do you want to get on?
No.
No.
I know, I'm addressing to get on.
I will rescind my motion first.
Yes.
Okay. I would like to rescind the motion that I made on October 8 regarding remediation of UVs as a final solution for those people in need of Plains Road. Okay. So you seconded so. You want to second my rescind? We're doing a different motion.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, I will second for purposes of discussion, but I don't know what the different motion is, so can we talk about that?
You may recall that I was then directed to consult with our attorneys about this. I have done so.
Okay.
And I'm bringing a somewhat modified version with the cautionary language, which is customary for attorneys.
Okay. And our motion was pending.
Pending attorney approval. I'm not, I'm a little bit, okay, second, yeah.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Go to it.
The motion reads as follows: "The village board supports the recommendations of the principal engineer for freshwater exploration phase two, that UV treatment systems be provided to one or several homes as the final solution should other solutions have failed, and further if, one, the village's insurance carrier and water attorney approve." The attorney has approved. "Two, the systems are installed by contractors selected by the village. Which contractors are given written permission, general release, to access their property for this purpose? And three, provided that the village will have no responsibility for any repair and maintenance of the UV system after it is initially installed and determined to be functioning properly." I believe that you all have copies of this before you.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, I will move.
That's all my business.
You've got just two others.
I didn't say I.
One is I'd like to move that we appoint Blue Steve Shapiro-Richard Barone as attorneys in Article 78. Proceeding into Ingrid Beer at all of the village of New Paltz meeting at all? Or any discussion? It's a roll call vote, so Alberta, you just have to call out our names when we say out your name.
Mayor West.
Aye.
Trustee Rhodes.
Yes.
Trustee Rocco.
Yes.
Trustee Vasco.
Yes.
And finally, I'll move that we host the upcoming Village of New Paltz website with a company called Dreamhost for 1990, up to 1995 per month.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I did, I was curious about this. This is what Katie brought up at the last meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Right now it's hosted by Brendan and we want a third party to host it.
Right, 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 okay.
And I thought, we looked around, this is like one of the industry standard.
Right, no, I mean, this is, you know, she's talking about it, so.
Jason, you have more experience with this, is this a good?
Yeah, it's one of the standards that you go, one of the go-to places. All right, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Are Susan and?
I'll move to adjourn the village portion of the meeting.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Friend, please see if Susan and Dave are ready. Thank you for your patience.
I just wanted to note for the record that was the most expeditious village board meeting I have ever been.
(laughing).
Are we doing public comment at this one?
Well, I think that the last three consecutive meetings have been chastised for not doing public comment.
You always should give to public comment.
So I think we should do it.
Yeah.
And are we, anyone else coming?
I mean, I suspect Jeff and Kevin are supposed to be here, but I can't, I'm not their keeper.
I'll move to the joint meeting, agenda, public input.
Any other additions? And we accept the agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You guys can't vote.
(laughing).
We weren't going to vote anyway.
Who do we have up first for the interviews here?
Well, you do.
And we're coming from inside, they are here.
Public comment for us. See, I do this every time, every joint meeting. Tammy, yes.
You think that because we get together, nobody else has a lot to talk?
I don't know what it is, I'll give you one.
Should I get up or just?
Wherever you're most comfortable.
Everyone makes people comfortable.
Okay, so I want to thank you all for your service and thank you for offering the remediation for possible coliform continuing, but should you go forward with that site, that's the least of the problems that some of the people have there. But if you're watering the well, would be the main, real main concern. The coliform could be handled, we know that, with these rights and stuff like that. I did get the report, it's a huge report that David Klausa gave and it's, there's a lot of pages, and we started reading some of it, and from the first part, I have some questions, and I'd like to propose some of the questions I have. So first, the first thing that came to mind is that in reading the report, that a lot of this stuff was good for the people who were doing the drilling and the measuring, a lot of the stuff that happened in this report. And why do they do all this gravity measuring and then drill in places that were less than optimal? I don't understand that. Why were 140 test wells bore and where are they all located, all these 140 test wells? Why wasn't the Highland-New York offer to supply water to New Paltz alternative fully evaluated prior to doing anything else? Like, I heard that that was a really good solution, why didn't we look into that? Another question is, certainly the engineers could have developed an estimate cost based on assumption before they actually did the drilling on Plains Road, where they had to do all that work and then come up with costs. These are engineers, they should know that cost basis beforehand. Certainly the engineers could have compiled the Highland-New York solution, compared the Highland-New York solution to the 101 Plain solution before expending about $600,000 to drill 130 wells. Like, this stuff could have been done before you spent all this money. Who were the village officials who are overseeing the decisions of these drill sites going in, you know, going in, spending all this money? If the village were expending its own fund, own funds, rather than the millions that appear to be available from the DEP, would it have done the same due diligence or more due diligence before handing out all that money, $600,000 so far? And by the way, that is taxpayers' money, it might not be ours, but it's other taxpayers' money. What is the cost to use the wallkill? Early on, there was a draft that showed it cost $1.2 million to use the wallkill, and where is that, anybody know where that document is now? Now it seems like there's another document that says it cost $5.6 million, the same as Plains Road, and that doesn't make sense when there was an earlier document that said it cost $1.2 million. Even if the wallkill option is the same money as the one on Plains Road, at least it's not going to harm anybody and probably won't cause litigation, so it probably would be a really good option. I also learned that the wallkill samples have been coming in in really good quality water. And also, due to the drought right now, from what I understand from hydro people, it's a good time to test the quality too. So if there's a drought, it's a really good time for sampling. And when will you guys start looking really seriously into these other options? And thank you, I have one copy, it's handwritten on some of it, I can turn it in.
Please.
Thank you.
Get a copy?
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Please.
I know that we technically haven't opened a meeting, so I'm just speaking as a community member, I guess.
She's not listening. Tammy, Dan is speaking.
Just so you know, we've actually done presentations, not about using the wallkill as a water source, but rather just the health of the Wallkill River that would indicate that, let's just say, I would not drink that water.
Well.
We've had a number of presentations on that, both the EPC has done it, as well as at one of our joint town-village meetings a few months back. And not only would I say that we shouldn't do that, but if you look at the entire Wallkill River, the worst testing samples all were in New Paltz. So I'm not sure where those other tests were coming from, but I just wanted to let you know that we've had that come at our meetings, that that would probably not be a viable solution.
Okay, I'd like to see it, Dr. Richard.
Absolutely, I believe they're on the town website as well.
But also, the water would have to be cleaned even if they used Plains Road, because the water from Plains Road has coliform and E. coli and all kinds of stuff in there anyway.
Sure, and I'm glad we send you the report on it, but it's why I made you know that.
And one more thing, there's also the Highland solution.
Do you want to say anything?
Nope.
No.
Any other public comment?
None.
None, okay. Then, now who do we have up first? Which company is?
Environmental Planning.
Thank you very much. Come on up. So this is here for interviews, but I see people have presentations as well.
Is that clear for you guys?
Yeah, that's.
I can.
I'm not a good person to judge this, so.
Want me to turn this?
They look the same thing as we have in our bus?
Yeah.
I'm going to turn it to you that way, so everybody can see. Can you see? Right? Jason, can you?
Yeah, I see, and we all have it right in front of us.
Yeah.
So I'm just going to.
Yeah.
Bear with me. It's not so skewed.
It's okay if it's a little skewed, it's nothing.
You know, traffic.
My turn?
I can cheer. If you'll cheer with Liz.
Well, good evening, I'm AJ Schwartz, managing principal with Environmental Planning and Design. Greatly appreciate having the opportunity to be here. We're going to take you through about a 20-minute presentation. I gave you a handout, and we're going to probably swerve over some of the slides. At your leisure, please go back, because I think you probably want to ask as many questions as you can in the little bit of time that we have, so we'll try to kind of focus on really the scope and what your objectives are and get into discussion. And yes, you guys want to get a better sense of who we are, what we do, how we think, and if there's a good fit. With me tonight is also Rich LaBreezy and Debbie Tallo. Rich is with DOMIS, I think you guys are probably familiar with Rich, he's from your communities. Debbie is from Delta Development Group. EPD is a firm based in Pittsburgh, we do planning, master planning, community planning in about five states. We've met Rich some time ago, we've worked on projects together, recently finishing up a river access plan in the Upper Delaware over in Sullivan County. And we've done an awful lot of work with Debbie and Teresa, who's in the proposal, as well as the rest of the Delta Development Group. We have a cool funky town, that's how we got our attention. You know, literally, you know, when you come into the village, you go across the river and you're in the countryside, it's just a wonderful place. A little context, myself, I'm a landscape architect and a planner, grew up in central Pennsylvania, have a lot of military in my family, seven West Pointers, how do I know about New Paltz? Because you can only go to Highland Falls once and you probably ran out of things to do, so you looked to, you looked to other areas to fill your weekends. So, weekend trip, discovered the place, and because it's a cool funky town, it's a place you come back to. So, again, we appreciate having the opportunity. On the next slide, New York chart. There's other team members with us. Parsons Brinkerhoff, who we work with out of both the Harrisburg, Pennsylvania office as well as the New York office. JJ is in Nettin, who's an illustrator, and then Urban Interactive Studio, who is a civic engagement. They focus on web technology opportunities, and we'll talk about that in a little bit more detail when we get into the presentation. Our experience in terms of community planning, we just had the Pennsylvania Planning Conference, literally just came from there this morning. We do, as I said, work in about five different states. We just won one award yesterday, it's not on the list. Nope, it's not on the list. Emerald View Trail Master Plan, it was one of the award for excellence. Anything that has stars, we're very proud. We do a lot of multi-ministerial planning, that's one of the things that, again, got our attention, because you're doing something that is not, from at least what I've seen in New York, is not the most common. Pennsylvania, communities working together to establish a master plan, a common vision, and then figure out what that means is a little bit more commonplace, I wouldn't say it's the norm by any stretch of imagination, but it's a lot more commonplace. So, how do you, how do you build confidence? How do you get those successes that you can get to more difficult issues? We have a lot of experience. The Charlotte West Plant, which is one listed here, is a great example of that. And that plant, we completed, you know, several years ago, and we worked on it for literally three years to get there. They've been doing now joint implementation along the way. So, it's a great experience base to be able to show how you can go from literally putting a plan together to something much more detailed. Rich?
My name is Richard LaBreezy, I'm from Delta Studios Architecture. I've had business for about 16 years now, and the majority of that has been in New Paltz. I've worked with AJ and his team on a couple of projects, the largest project being the one in Sullivan County for the six river access plan. That project was also done jointly with mutual Brenner, who's also in Pittsburgh, and the basis behind that project had started from a visitor center that we had done in Narrowsburg for the same community, for the buy one for the town, I'm sorry, the Delaware, Delaware plan. And through that process, environmental design and planning, and our office had worked together to figure out six different access points along the Delaware. We worked very well together, and we decided to look at other possible and potential projects in our area, this being one of them. I have done a lot of the local small-scale projects in the area, from the New Paltz water groups, some of the improvements to the buildings there, several houses in the community, in the town. I've done some local work on projects in the MR State Bank, also did the MR State Bank renovations for their headquarters in Loopers, as well as the product grant renovation in Kingston. At that time, I took over their space and New Paltz renovated that as well.
Okay. I said it'd be better to do that on hand. I guess before I start, we have three projects listed here, but a couple of things that aren't on the list that I thought would be interesting to note is that AJ, EPD, and Delta are currently working on a comprehensive plan for the Upper Darby Township, which is one of the first ranked suburbs of the Philadelphia area. And also, Urban Interactive Studios, one of our partners there, and as you said, we'll talk about them. They're a really unique company that we think will add value to this project, and it's working really well in Upper Darby. I included three projects. I would be doing the market analysis portion of the project, the economic analysis, and also the fiscal analysis. So that would be my role. So I tried to include projects where that was the focus. The first one is urban enterprise zone assessment for the state of New Jersey. The state of New Jersey has a program, it's a place-based funding program, where they fund some of their municipalities that have distressed areas. They engaged us to do an assessment of all of the communities where they've been investing money over the last 30 years, and assess the benefit cost, what has been our return on the investment that we put into these municipalities. So there were 37 municipalities that we did the benefit cost analysis on. We also did a redevelopment plan and market analysis for downtown Hershey. I don't know if you're familiar with Hershey, Pennsylvania, that's where I live, is in Hershey. And we did their redevelopment plan, it actually was for the private entity, Hershey Entertainment and Resorts, rather than the municipality, which added a little different, you know, aspect to that project. But it included the market analysis, as well as, once we identified what their opportunities were, the market opportunities, we had done an evaluation of all of the underutilized properties in the downtown area, and looked at how could we take those market opportunities and configure them into those underutilized properties so that we're preserving the open space that is around the Hershey area. And then, the other one is a more, it's a more urban area, it's in Waldorf, Maryland, Charles County, which is about 45 minutes south of the DC area. The DC Metro was looking to extend the metro into Waldorf, and they wanted to get a jumpstart and do some development, some transit-oriented development. So we did market analysis and economic analysis, looking at the benefit cost of what if we did this and different alternatives, so.
For clarification, EPD will be the lead. Our focus is really on the technical planning, the pure community planning side. Delta, as Debbie was alluding to, is doing the market and the economic component. Rich is focusing on the design aspect, in terms of detailed design, when we're looking at potential redevelopment sites, as well as anything that could come out as part of maybe zoning-related recommendations, that type of thing, design guidelines, et cetera. Parsons is a transportation planning firm, so if they're, they have a very small role when you look at the detailed scope. Not knowing if there's issues that we need to delve into, we have an expert on the team to be able to deal with that, whether it's connectivity, I saw somebody came in, a lot of bikes around, you know, even down to that level where there's broken connections and there's safety issues at intersections, that type of thing. Zenetta Illustration is an illustrator, and you'll see through the presentation, we're highly graphic, very design-oriented. And then, as we talked about, Urban Interactive is really focusing on the website. If you go to the next page, I won't get into the detail on this, the scope of work, yes, in conformance with New York State requirements, in terms of through the enabling law, the second bullet, strongly encourage, make sure you customize, because as in other places like Pennsylvania, there's a lot of maids. You really need to use the planning process to deal with the issues you currently have, and not, you don't have to go into extensive, you know, studies of demographics, if you know your demographics, but you have other issues like lane use issues or, you know, infill issues, those types of things. Really try to deal with the issues. We're big leaders in focusing on implementation. We would strongly proportionate work with you guys. We would be strongly encouraging implementation before you even finish the plan, because the success is that you guys will achieve working together and collaborating. That leads to more energy, and it's kind of the crawl-walk-one mentality in terms of trying to start with small stuff and progress. And early implementation is one of those ways of doing that. In the scope, in terms of the public participation process, you've defined a planning advisory committee. Did you guys form that yet?
We've talked about.
So that's really your steering committee, so we were expecting, anticipating there to be extensive involvement with them. Community workshops, stakeholder outreach, you always need to sit down with either business owners, you know, long-term residents, student body. You have a university, that one plan, the Altoona Plan, it's a town gown, it's a driven plan, a lot of experience, State College, dealing with Penn State. And obviously, presentations to you as elected officials. And then, the online interactive. And the online interactive, I'm going to get in more detail. What we're looking at is giving you a way to reach the public that doesn't come to the meetings. You have a few people tonight, virtually, I think nowadays, it's hard to get people to come to a meeting unless there's a controversial issue. You know, if there's a hot button topic, yes, you'll fill them room. But to get people to give input in terms of what they see are the aspirations of the community, what they see are opportunities that could be capitalized on or are the problems, it's really hard to get to those people. So, using technology, the internet, as a vehicle, that's what the online interactive is. I could be sitting in my living room at 11 o'clock at night, I just came back, and I have the opportunity to look at a proposal, a concept, and be able to weigh in. And so, it's a good vehicle to be able to start collecting additional information. Documentation trends, review, peruse plans, analyzing demographics, and there's a bullet on your list that's really focusing on then taking that market information and figuring out what are the uses that make sense for infill for some of the potential redevelopment sites, some of the light industrial sites that may be in the town that could be redeveloped over time. That's how we anticipate using the market analysis. Crawl-walk-one, key thing, that's an underpinning, and I'll say that 27 times, start with small stuff and progress to more difficult things. And you're in the process, I know you've had a lot of discussions on a variety of topics over the years, and you have to get confidence when the plan wants to kind of frame out, how do you progress from an implementation standpoint through that. The elements of the rest of the bullets are really what needs to be in the plan. Market analysis, Debbie went down here, want to talk about that a little bit more?
Okay. If you notice on, at the top of the page, I listed the types of things we would be looking at, retail, restaurant, entertainment, office, and residential. The one thing that I would add is that I know that you will likely not want to have any kind of heavy industrial development or anything that would be, you know, harsh environmentally. However, as we're doing the analysis, if we come across opportunities for light industrial, and if we have, if there are underutilized properties that would lend themselves to that, we would certainly bring that to the table as well as we are doing the analysis. So I just wanted to clarify that. The market analysis, we will, I guess, one of the first things that I would say is that, in our experience, plans that are the most successful in implementation are the plans that have done their homework and done their due diligence. At the end of the day, when you complete a plan, you're going to be looking for partners. And when you go out and you go to a partner and you say, here's our vision, here's our plan for how we're going to accomplish that vision, and here's why it's going to work, and then will you be our partner, and here's what's in it for you, here's what it's going to mean for you. to mean for you. And so, when we start a market analysis, we start with that in mind. Who is that final audience? And what information is it that they're going to be looking for? Because what we want to be able to deliver is an analysis and recommendations that will give you a sustainable redevelopment plan and master plan, something that's realistic, something that fits within the character of your community. And as AJ said, you have a really neat community character, and so, we want to make sure that we preserve that character and build our redevelopment context. We do two types of analysis. The first type would be our statistical analysis. We use the most recent data available from the most reliable and best-known sources, information that can be revisited later so that you can see progress in some of the indicators of the market. But beyond that, we also, you know, you can run numbers all day, but to really refine those numbers, we will do interviews with local people, and we'll look to you to help us identify those people who have the greatest knowledge about the market in this area, so that we can bring our statistical analysis to them, and say, does this make sense? Can you tell us what's happening here that's causing this trend, et cetera? And we just ground-truth it with local knowledge. And then, we look at other factors that are going to impact. You might have an analysis that shows a demand in a certain area of opportunities, but when you start looking at some areas like the people, I think we're on a different page. People, places where your current activity areas, your connectivity, and that would be pedestrian, it would be roadways, it would also be technology infrastructure as well. Your business environment, the amenities that are already existing, and consumer demand. So all of those would come into play as well, and we would look at those as we make recommendations for what could be developed. Other considerations, we understand that you have already done a build-out analysis, and we would look at the results of that analysis, and the fiscal analysis that was done as well. That would be something that we would look at, your zoning, your natural resource systems, infrastructure, transportation, and also SUNY, that is the town gown aspect, is something that would be important. We'll be laying the groundwork for collaboration, as I mentioned before, who are those partners that we would want to bring to the table and begin implementation. And then, look at potential redevelopment areas. I'm sure that you guys probably have areas already in mind, but we'll be looking at that as well. And then, we would have success measures that we would develop, once we come up with recommendations, and you have a plan in place. How can you measure your success in implementation?
And in terms of strengthened relationships, jumping ahead, just for the sake of time, and this is from our perspective, you have a unique character. You have a very clearly defined village, and you have a very clearly defined countryside when you get to the town. I mean, literally, when you cross over that bridge, it's a very different place, but it's incredibly memorable when you look at them together, right? And so, that power of place, really, to me, you know, is what potentially could drive a plan. Yes, you have unique character within each of the communities, but when you really look at yourself as a region, it's a pretty powerful recipe. How do you take that market information, and then combine that with the bones that you already have? Because it's a wonderful place. And so, when you start looking at things like parcels that haven't developed, parcels that could have a new use on, ways that profit character, and that's where you get into good design, design guidelines, those types of things. And that's really kind of the undertaking of building those relationships. And talking about form, really understanding and appreciating the public, what we call the public realm. So the streets, the streets are, they're probably the most important places, spaces within your community. And so, looking at those spaces, and then working back to what happens with the potential in private property. And then, how do you use the plan to guide them? Because you're never going to be able to tell a property owner specifically how to use property, but to give them ideas of what the community aspirations are, that's the purpose of the master plan. And sustainability, from our perspective, is not just on the green side, but it's on, as Debbie had mentioned, really on that fiscal side. How do you balance these? You know, I know there was this pilot discussion, actually, we were talking about the pilot before we even got started tonight. You know, from our perspective, that's a part of sustainability. How do you take all of your assets, be able to maintain the quality of community that you have, and those services, still encourage additional growth and development, and be able to keep the roof up? Because there's cost of all that stuff, and that's a part of the sustainability. Economic feasibility, one of the key drivers from our perspective, again, is taking that economic analysis and figuring out, okay, if there's infill, if there's new development somewhere in both the communities, what's the right mix? That's the feasibility side of it. And you've taken that first step as a part of your build-out. Highly graphic. We've become the concepts, illustrations, pictures worth a thousand words. We're not ones to, when you look at our plans, yes, there's text, there has to be narrative sections, but again, a picture's worth a thousand words. And good reason why Rich is on the team to help guide us, really knowing and understanding the local vernacular, having a pulse in the community, and at the same time, he can grow as well as the illustrator. I think we put together a pretty strong team in that context. Meetings and outreach, I'm not going to go over this in detail, you touched on it a little bit earlier. Our philosophy for public engagement is getting people to talk. We tend to go to people, again, because a lot of times you can't get people to come to meetings anymore, to talk about what they see or the good things. So many meetings are just a complaint, they're just grumbling about everything. It doesn't give the community good guidance as to what the big vision is. So we work very hard to really get to, what do they want to be when you grow up, so to speak? You know, that's not maybe the best analogy, but it comes to mind, and hence, why we went the route in terms of bringing Urban Interactive. So, if you imagine a website, okay, that's a project website, and it's not, okay, I'm going to go to RAI, and I'm going to buy a new pair of sneakers, and it's fairly static. Urban Interactive is always changing, okay? There are times when the website will be conveying information about upcoming meeting. It may be conveying information about something that, you know, was a study or a report that was vetted and was ready to be posted. And then, it may be a time showing concepts that have surveys that are attached to that, so you're getting people to kind of, you know, interact and give input. So it changes complexion throughout the planning process. I think oftentimes, project websites, you know, that type of technology, it gets stale. What we saw in our first week is the same thing you saw, unfortunately, in Week 52. It just gets tired and stale. Schedule, we're anticipating an 11-12 month process. It's not the first rodeo I've been to. I know, master plan's state time, there's politics, you guys are working jointly together, it takes time to do that. From our perspective, whatever that timeframe is, we need to sit down and really frame it out. We took a shot at it, so we're very flexible in terms of the timeframe. Typically, you can do a master plan in that timeframe, you know? Sometimes it'll go into 15, 16 months, but you need to make the right amount of time. So we're very flexible on that perspective. Those last couple of slides, I'm not going to get into, that's the propaganda, why hire else, and that kind of stuff, and I am. Questions? Your opportunity to talk.
So, you had talked a bit about people not coming to meetings and all the rest. Specifically, how are you looking to engage those people? I know on your graphics, you have a number of social media tools and all the rest, and I was just wondering if you could elaborate a little bit more on that.
Yeah, you want to talk about Upper Darby a little bit here. Talk about Upper Darby, because, you know, here's a phrase, we had some challenges.
Yes, we have had some significant challenges in Upper Darby. However, I don't know if you're aware of it or not, but over the weekend, or this past weekend, we had nearly doubled what we had already had, in people going and taking the surveys. But we've done a number of approaches. One thing was that the municipality has a newsletter that goes out on a monthly basis. So there was an announcement in the newsletter, and a spread in the newsletter that encouraged people to go to the website. We asked, we have a steering committee that consists of about 15 or 20 people, all of them very connected in the community, and so, they all have Facebook pages, and they have their own ways of getting the word out. We also did neighborhood meetings, and there's seven distinct neighborhoods in the township. So we did neighborhood meetings, and at those neighborhood meetings, that was a good opportunity to encourage people, you know, you go and tell your neighbors about what's going on. But, you know, it has been a challenge, but those are some of the ways that we tried it there. And we would want to talk with you all about, how do you currently communicate? And what avenues of communication are already in place that could be utilized? And so, that's how we would approach it.
So it's a portal. So the challenge is how to get the information about the portal to people. Upper Darby's 88,000 people, okay? Completely different, right? Smaller community, Swick, we're on community level in Swickly, so about 3,000 people, who live half your size, basically. We literally, when we were going through the com plan, had little business card-sized things with a QR code and the website address on it. We didn't use this device. And we handed those out. So we went to every farmer's market, you know, through like a two-month period, there was a kiosk there. It was a tag team between, you know, village officials and ourselves, through putting cards at various businesses throughout the community. We had a mobile kiosk that moved around. It was at the public library sometimes, sometimes it was, their fire hall, it was as a community center, it was at the fire hall. The schools, you know, we float around, and that is where I fully agree with Debbie, is, you know, we need to have a discussion of what are the best ways. Once people know about the portal, now this is where all the stuff kind of gets centralized, and so people know, you know, in terms of a web address, I'm making this up, you know, the dream loophole, okay? So that everybody is going dot com, everybody's going to that particular website to get their information. He's managing it, we're feeding him content, and it was you guys, as the planning advisory committee, reviews and approves everything, then it gets posted. And the surveys are really the way to get people to start, you know, literally, here's three alternatives and concepts, let us, give us input. What do you think of number one? What do you think of number two? What do you think of number three? And, you know, some people don't, they don't like coming to a public meeting, and, you know, they're afraid to talk in front of people, they don't want to give criticism, but they have ideas. You know, and it gives a good clean way for people to be able to do that.
We both, excuse me, have websites. Could we create a one?
Correct. You definitely want to have a link with the website.
So that people shy, indifferent, too busy to come to a meeting, whatever, can get in on that and make a contribution. My second question, which you may or may not want to answer, but I'd like to know if you can. What is your ideal composition of a steering committee to work with you?
That's a good question. And I'm probably going to give you the answer that you're not going to like.
That's okay.
You need to have the good, the bad, and the ugly. You need to have the good, the bad, and the ugly, okay? You need to have a good composition for a variety of issues, so people that are knowledgeable about, you know, a variety of issues, that have the communities in their best interest, right? They may be major property owners, and yes, they'll have an agenda, or they may, is anybody with the university? Is anybody with the university?
Just, we have a representative.
So maybe there's somebody from the university, obviously, there's a perspective there, right? But you need that voice at the table. So I think early on, we should have a discussion, okay, what are some major issues? And then, figure out what that population is. Typically, 15 starts to get unwieldy, you know, in terms of the size of the group, but...
I have a proposal that I've submitted to my fellow board members, and it does not contain 15, suggest 15 people. It's around 10. Around 10.
Seven truly is that magic number.
Seven?
Seven is that group dynamic.
We're a little bigger than that.
We're a little bit bigger than that. I'd like to ask you about, what was the most difficult matter that you dealt with in the town gown relationships? And how did it come out? How did you deal with it?
Okay. Altoona, and they go very different places. Altoona, the issue was, the university was landlocked. Students were now starting to migrate into what were outside of their normal student outfit. So they were getting into what would be the more single-family, long-term resident, okay?
Altoona's?
Altoona's.
Oh, this is every, this is every, every thing. It's not uncommon. The second thing that was going on at Altoona, so there was an impact in terms of those residential neighborhoods. The second thing is, because they were landlocked, they were now starting to buy up properties in the downtown. And what that was, from a tax standpoint, was really a problem, and I know you guys have had discussions about this whole thing. But it was also an issue in terms of character. Because the buildings that they were renovating were more institutional types of buildings. They weren't the traditional shopping, you know, their scale of the downtown is different than yours, but it was losing its flavor in terms of a commercial district. It was becoming an institutional district. In the case of State College, and Theresa, who's not here tonight, works with Debbie, was the manager of the downtown partnership, their CDC, their community development corporation focused literally on the downtown. You know, they had every issue from parking to whatnot, you know, in terms of the student safety, vandalism in terms of properties, you know, that type of thing. And the big one was just the increased density, and what it meant in terms of property maintenance, you know? Because that was the thing that was now, the pressure was on the long-term residents because they saw a change in the character of the community. And, you know, unmodeed racks, the simple little things like that.
I'm interested in your facilitation in the planning for the municipalities to come to grips with those. I mean, we recognize these problems a lot, and we know that the consultants, the folks like yourself, don't solve the problem, they go home after the plan is done, mostly. But your job is to help facilitate coming to grips with it. How did you help them come to grips with the plan?
Yeah. Okay, I'll answer your question, and I'm going to come back and counter you on your statement of leaving town and not being seen.
I'll tell you a story after the end.
And hopefully it'll laugh.
It won't be here.
And I'll tell you a lie.
Okay, first thing, and I'll take Altoona as an example. So Altoona, as soon as we really got arms around what was going on, and what the order of magnitude, how much land, or how many lots had been taken up, what that meant from a fiscal standpoint, from a tax-based standpoint. And we're able to somehow quantify the effect in terms of these broken streets that now nobody wants to walk down because there was this student, you know, learning center, which basically was a big classroom, but it was the size of a city block. Well, nobody's going to walk past that. They lost the harmony of the street. We had a sit-down meeting with the universities, so the key officials. We would always do that one-on-one, get their reaction. Then we went back to literally the steering committee. We started talking about, okay, here's their perspective of this. And we basically showed diplomacy, worked out the concept... And we basically showed diplomacy, worked out the concepts. Before we ever went to a larger group, like a larger focus group, where we now had other businesses in the downtown. So we had a better sense of really what was going on, where were they going? You know, we would look at the master plan, university master plan. Sometimes they don't have a good direction of where they're going. Sometimes they're not forthcoming about where they're going, particularly in the student housing side. And before we put things in the press, before it was, it was out in the public, we tried to deal with it. Penn State, it was a similar situation.
But State College and Altuna are very, very different than New Foss. Talk to me about York and how you played York College into the New York.
Okay, we worked in York township. So township's around the southern side, so no, you did not have to deal directly with it.
Have you dealt with a community that has a smaller, very dominant?
Grove City College, again, it's small, it's about fifteen hundred, it was the smallest town in the neighborhood that you had. In that one, we had traffic issues. We had, again, they were outgrowing, they didn't have the resources to build housing themselves. So they were looking at the private sector, developers to build houses.
Very similar, okay.
So there, it was a very pointed discussion of where, which neighborhoods did that make the most sense? Did zoning need to get adjusted to allow that to happen? What needed to come with that zoning idea? Did we make those special uses or conditional uses that standards could be added on? Getting the university to accept design standards. So then all of a sudden, now we had multifamily buildings in a neighborhood that was largely a single-family. The scale of the buildings made sense. And that's largely why we're just sitting here, because you're getting down to a design detail type of thing. What are the right proportions for building? How should they be oriented? Grove City's a good example.
Okay, and I know Grove City, so I can relate. Um, but back to the question of composition of your advisory committee. And I'll just throw some things out and you react. Would you prefer government be held aside, the organized part of government be held aside, and deal with community members who may have been planning board members, may have been ZBA members, are really in tune with the business community? And is that the group that, you know, basically you're looking to? Or do you want a mix of the two? And would you prefer a planning board member from the town, a planning board member from the village, a member of ZBA, or a planner?
The latter is a definite.
Is it definite?
Is it definite.
Okay, bring your in.
Go back to your beginning, okay? Politizing the process.
Right.
That's really what you're asking.
Okay.
Yeah, don't know the personalities of the politics. Yes, you have to be very mindful of that, because they could get charged just because of the personalities. You don't want the plan to go down. If you determine that it makes sense to separate, we definitely have to then go have meetings with the elected officials because they have to, you can't give them a plan at the eleventh hour instead of review this, and you're going to, you're going to pass this by a resolution. It's not going to happen. You know, they need to be a part of the process strategically. And so we would have to have briefings along the way that you're able to say, okay, here's where the steering committee, the planning advisory committee, here's the ideas they've come up with, let's bounce some ideas off of it, okay? You know, if you have not a good, not a charged, you know, climate, you certainly can have a few elected officials report of steering committee. You're probably getting out of that set and you're getting closer to the fifteen range. Because you definitely need to have, you know, a good voice that is not like...
But in the ideal world, would it be better in a sense to have two advisory committees? As you pointed out, people talked about the fact that the community doesn't come to meetings. But the community definitely has viewpoints that need to be in, it's their community, so to speak. And would it be better in that sense to have a mix, on the one hand, of planning board, college, our planner, and some community people who hopefully would have a little experience in planning and have a concept in their head, as one advisory committee that you can really talk to and find out the nitty-gritty? And then a governmental advisory committee, as you point out, we are going to vote on this. We're going to decide to implement. And perhaps we would be mixing apples and oranges if the information that we really need and really want to be guided by is guided by ourselves. That seems to me to defeat this purpose.
I may be falling in my sword.
Yes.
I would not have two separate committees.
You would not?
No. No, I think you want to have a cohesive committee that's broad.
But not just governmental officials?
Not just governmental officials. And all I'm really suggesting is we need to make sure that as the plan is progressing, we're getting back to the elected officials to make sure that we're in tune, they're in tune. And that if there's any trepidation that we sense, we can go back to that planning advisory committee and say, hey, I'm not sure that that future land use plan is going to pass muster. So we can, we use focus groups and key person interviews as a way of getting to the nitty-gritty and really getting into somebody's mindset of what they see are major issues.
So I see a fifteen-member committee.
You know, I'm not sure if it's a fifteen, that Upper Darby, I really thought it was like five. It's like, it takes up a whole room.
But we need a good mix.
You need a good mix.
And both.
If you want to have a plan, go back to what Debbie said, that has legs and has any hope to be implemented, it all comes out of the committee. You know, it is our job to help facilitate that discussion, just as you said, okay? And being able to get people to talk about what those major issues are, referee when we need to referee, and then come up with those concepts that balance everybody's objectives and comes up with a good solution, right? And where I went to counter you before you, I didn't, we didn't do our job. If we left, okay, the plan is done, and you don't know what to do, we didn't do our job.
No, I have an old motto, but I'll, I'll spare you.
As you like.
Actually, it's not.
Okay.
If it was in Latin, I would give it to you. But I'll spare you. Now, I want to ask you another question. You worked in intermunicipal planning. What was the most difficult job that you had in reconciling the perspectives of two different municipalities?
Okay, the most...
By the way, obviously, related, I mean, we have almost the same name, but different.
It's true.
But I, I tend to look at things regionally. I mean, that's, that's my training. So I look at you as a place, yes, you have different characters, you have different people, you have different assets, but you are a place. I mean, when you look at the map, you are a place. From a comprehensive planning standpoint, I would say probably one of the multi-municipal plans that we, it's on the list, it's the Etna, Millvale, and Sharpsburg. The two of the communities are so intertwined, you could go from one to the other, you would never know. Very different than your situation. And the other community is like three miles away, completely separated. There's another community in between. Multi-municipal plans need to have wins. People have to come out as winners. They may have an issue that they, 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 they had to make a compromise, and they might have been the idea. When that community was separated, that was a challenge, because it was hard to come up with a clear win on their end. And their big issue in terms of their comp plan was how to redevelop their riverfront. That was on the Alagade River. The second thing was, they wanted to use the plant, because in Pennsylvania, if you do a multi-municipal plan, from a zoning standpoint, you can now share uses. In Pennsylvania, the land use law, you have to have accommodative uses. You have to have all the sexually oriented businesses, all the different types of industrial, all the group homes. In theory, everybody has to take care of it, right? When you do a multi-municipal plan, and you have your intergovernmental cooperation agreement, you sign your little contract, you can share uses. So what the issue was, some community was better suited to handle all the industrial. They didn't want the group homes. Okay, where was that going to happen? And then some other communities didn't want to have the higher density residential. They wanted to stay lower density. And that was the balance that came out of it. That was a challenge. Because that, having that third community being removed, it was just geographically. It wasn't a mindset. It was just, there was, sharing the uses was a little more difficult. I think the most difficult multi-municipal effort was actually a joint zoning ordinance.
Joint zoning?
Yeah. That is a challenge. Because setting up, they opted to do a joint planning commission, but they had separate zoning hearing boards. Because typically a zoning hearing board or a board of adjustment, you know, you're drilling down to a very site-specific. They didn't want Community A to weigh in on a problem in Community C. They just didn't feel that that was appropriate, which I think they probably were right. But hammering that out, that was at least eighteen months. You know, it was a long process to go through.
Thank you.
Should you be chosen, when could you start?
I think from a workload, there's a little thing called a slow economy right now. workload, we could probably get started already, quickly, in a couple of weeks. I mean, just shift, shift schedule around.
No, no one says it'll be more like a month or so till we get the contract and everything hammered out.
I think the proposal is like all our... But, yeah, we, we have the resources to get there.
Okay.
We actually have a forty-five-member profession team.
I just had one quick comment. When you had, earlier on, had said that we have a defender of two communities, you know, so you go to the bridge and you look out, you see...
I use that as an example.
Okay, only just because, I mean, I mean, we do have a infrastructure part of the community, and then we have the outside area, but the problem is the infrastructure part of the community is divided in half between the village and the town.
Yes, I know.
So I just wanted to make sure that you...
I think, I was merely, and I should have articulated it better. I was using that landscape because it is such a striking landscape.
I happen to agree with you, and I happen to believe that one, because the problem is the fact that we have, you know, an infrastructure portion of, you know, of the community that has two governments, and I think creates a lot of problems. I just wanted to make sure that you were clear about that. Because to me, that's probably one of the bigger problems that will come about. Well, maybe not, because I think a lot of us have the same vision, which is having to have two governments anyway, but that's...
No.
I just want to make sure you went...
Anywhere, and I'm agreeing that probably is going to be your big, those are going to be your major discussion. How do you, how do you get there?
Okay. Oh, yeah, anything?
I guess my, my question would be, what is your personal view on sustainability and environmental plan? I mean, your name is environmental, I need to sign, but in terms of like moving forward with green buildings? And, you know, what is your mindset on that?
Um, we, O'Con was one of, well, it was the first form-based, you know, in Pennsylvania. True, it's a hybrid, because of the way the name works, but we embedded lead within that standard. The neighborhood, there's two neighborhoods that have developed out of that mixed-use district. The one, he's lead, he's an ND. He came in, he had forty-six points, if you know what I'm talking about, out of his sixty-five that he was trying to get, just because of the ordinance. So anywhere, you know, when we're trying through, either through a master plan or through an ordinance, we try to embed those types of standards. I had mentioned Swickly. Swickly adopted a whole series of low-impact development standards, anything from letting to stormwater management. You know, so from green parking lots to literally no water leaving the property, whether they were putting in a system or an incentive for irrigation or whatever. Again, fairness from community to community, but we try to push, we try to push that bar as far as we, as far as the communities want to go. We're not going to jam something down anybody's throat, but the same kind of, we... I mean, it's, it's our ethic, as you said, environmental planning is in the name.
Right.
We try to push that as far as we can. And from a sustainability standpoint, and as I said, sort of like bringing it to us is at the end of it. Like this whole notion of how to balance land uses, deal with infrastructure issues, and have a tax base that's equitable for all the property owners, not naive, yeah? That's a major challenge in a, in a, in a college town. That's a major challenge.
I mean, we've had flooding issues before, and I anticipate we will in the future. And, you know, the village is not yet, we're not yet declared an MS four community, but we're going to be. So that, we're, yeah, we're basically facing that. And the tech, you are one officially, which...
You're a town.
I guess technically means that the village is, you know, but, so that's the kind of stuff that we are looking at, you know, permeable pavement, just things along those lines. So, you know, we're looking at legislating some of that stuff. So it'd be great to incorporate and bring in and talk about form-based zoning, so.
One last question, and if you don't want to answer it, don't.
Keep answering.
But, just your impression of communities which you arrive at to start to help that community who may have very diverse views, some factionalized, some serious, inter-community...
Wow, yours could start scaring them.
No.
Serious hate issues?
I mean, I think Mr. LaGrizzi is aware of some of the issues. Have you found that in helping a community plan together, that you've actually been able to strengthen tolerance, strengthen understandings, or bringing together people who think they're apart when actually they're not that far apart? Have, do you have a sense of your impact in making a community more interested in working and collaborating together and looking for common solutions for what they might perceive as very diverse problems?
In other words, do you have Gandhi or Martin Luther King?
And if so, what are their hourly rates?
I mean, no, I think it's a very honest question, and I think Mr. LaGrizzi is aware of what I'm asking. And, you know...
We have had discussions.
You do have a psychiatrist.
I'm not going to mention anything about chickens, so I... So we've had discussions, the fact that I'm...
It sounds like a psychiatrist. Put that on, put that on, in the budget.
No, it's not that you say it. It's one thing in school, they never taught you that, yes, that's one thing in school, they never tell you, right? That part of the job is literally understanding how to get people to talk and play that role where you are to some degree a psychologist, right? And you're, you're having to figure out how you get, how do you shift some of the discussion and get people to actually start talking to each other and get comments around? I'm just going back to this. And it seems so simple.
It does.
Okay.
Easier said than done.
It doesn't seem simple, trust me.
But it's, it's blading off, it's blading off, and you get back to rolling the process.
Actually, we've had discussions. And I think what your question points to, the first act is having to actually consider a joint master plan between the town and village. I think just the act of doing that, whatever team is selected, is going to expose the problems on both sides and is going to force people to look at problems on both sides. Because integrating those two can't be possible unless they're looked at under, under the same umbrella. And H.J. was excellent at doing that. He, I've seen him work with communities that have factual, sometimes antagonistic relationships. And he's brought us together in terms of our team and working with those people incrementally to be able to deal with the whole. And it's dealing with a hole that's going to expose a lot of things. In the end, we're not going to solve everything a hundred percent, obviously. But the act of having this idea from the very beginning, I think, is pushed towards seeing what both sides of the picture are. Because they're very complex issues sometimes. Sometimes people go following tangents, I see that too. But the issues are complex, and that, and that's why people get so hard-passed one versus the other. But the issues are complex, and that's why people get so hard-passed one ways.
And the nature of a comp plan, it's almost, I would, it's akin to peeling an onion, okay? There's a whole series of topics that are all combined together to make up a million. You have to literally peel and sting back individually and understand what that is. That is exactly a very rigid one, with it begins to expose on very smaller pieces, more manageable, more digestible topics. Then once you understand what the ramification is of those individual issues are, then you start putting the onion back together in a form that you, as a collective, think it should be put back together. That's how, that's the magic of a comp plan. So it's, you get, the trick is breaking it down. And that's in the course of breaking it down, how you can ride with those crawl type of topics. Because they're there. You just have to break it down to the small enough level of detail to really be able to deal with something.
And then build it back up.
And then build it back up.
I have one more question. I know you said you live in Hershey?
Yes.
So I was just wondering, in terms of your ability to be here and be present in a lot of these meetings, and not, I'm not singling you out, and you said you live in the community, but...
I'm in Pittsburgh.
Okay, so in terms of being able to be here, is that gonna be a problem at all?
It's a non-issue.
You don't mind doing all that driving, and what is the reimbursement cost?
I just spent three days in, A, we don't charge for mileage.
Okay, I was just going back and looking that up for that. I didn't see it.
We don't charge for mileage.
Okay.
We work in five states. We wouldn't be able to function that way if we charged. Our prices would be so expensive.
That's part of why I was asking. I saw that it said that it includes reimbursable costs, and that's why I was on the...
And when you look at, with the breakdown of those reimburse, that's basically paper, you know, producing reports and the studies and mapping and things like that. I just spent three days in Philadelphia, did some work in Upper Darby. I'm in Harrisburg tomorrow night. So we tend to schedule things that when we're making trips, we're defraying that cost to the front, you know, because we're working on three-four different properties at a time. So we sit down and say, okay, what works mutually for everybody? If somebody needs something, again, we're the manager. So when somebody needs something, you pick up the phone and you call myself, or you call Caroline. She's, she would be the project director. We're responsible for reaching out to the riches and the depths of the world, okay? You don't need, you don't, you're not the project manager, that's not, your challenge, that's our challenge, okay?
We're the challenge, right?
We're all responsible. But in the course of doing that, yes, there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of travel. So in county, I don't think we ever had, even the dead winter, we never had a student in terms of travel. You know, so.
All right, any last questions?
We had a team from, yeah, we had a partner from Montrose.
I'm afraid that we have to say thank you, but, because we have to move on to some other persons.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, we appreciate the opportunity and hope we can have some discussion.
Yeah, we appreciate you coming here.
We had one person who wanted to speak up a comment, but thought the meeting was starting at a regular time of seven-thirty. So with the board's permission, is that...
I'll admit that that was my fault, I gave it personal time.
Did you?
Yeah, sorry.
So if you wouldn't mind just one moment?
So what are we doing?
Just one public comment, because she thought, she was told the meeting started at seven-thirty, not at six. Yes, please.
Hi, my name is Ellen Merble, and I had an incident last week, on Wednesday, involving parking and a tow fee. And I, my story is, I went to Salvation Army on Wednesday, it's Happus Day, I often go on Happus Day. And I often find a parking lot rental, it's a rather small parking lot. And I have for years parked in the Village Pizza, you know, just parked around behind Village Pizza and used their parking spaces. So I did that. And as I approached Salvation Army, an employee came out and told me that Village Pizza had just come over and told them that if any customers parked in their lot, they were towed. So I walked back over, I walked into Village Pizza to say, and I said to them, you know, I just parked my car here, I'm just gonna run into Salvation Army, is that okay? And they said, no, it's not okay. And I said, funny, because I've done that many times before, well, you can't do it. And I said, well, I think that's really mean, you know, and unkind and neighborly of you, but I'll move my car. So the guy then said, he wasn't the owner, it wasn't his policy, he was just telling me. So I moved my car, and I drove around, and I drove over towards Huguenot Street, towards the rail trail. And I saw their lovely parking lot, and it says, parking for Historic Huguenot Street. But I actually didn't look at that sign, honestly. I pulled into the parking lot, there were many spaces available. And I took one of them in front of the historical marker, and I thought, so much nicer place to park anymore. Got out of my car, and I walked into Salvation Army. And about fifteen minutes later, I came back to my, that parking lot, and my car was gone. And of course, the first panic is, what's happened to my car? And then I realized, they must have towed my car. And an employee came in a golf cart and said, yeah, I towed your car. And I said, but, but I was only here fifteen minutes, I just walked over to Salvation Army. And he said, he told me that he had put many, many notices on my car, which I had never parked in that lot before. I have a tan Volvo station wagon, which, which I see many in town. So I, you know, I mean, I was, I was angry, and I said, I can't believe you towed my car. I was just gone for ten minutes to the Salvation Army, it's a charitable organization, it's right around their corner. I mean, and so he, you know, he told me that to protect their parking, and that there were signs. There is indeed, I actually took some pictures two days ago. There's a small sign that's off to the left of the parking lot, and there's a small sign off to the right. But there's not a sign from, or spaces away from where I parked. So I, he all just got the golf cart for a while and walked over. Well, he just said my car was across the street. So I walked over, realized I didn't really know where the tow lot was, but found it behind the parking, the gas station there, Tow Riffick, it's right there on the corner. So they towed my car across the street within a ten-minute time period. I actually just checked the receipts. They got the call to tell me at four oh five, I checked out of Salvation Army at four eleven. So they had my car for about ten minutes. I walk over there, and he tells me it's two hundred and seventy dollars to retrieve my car. So my point, but I then went home and called Huguenot Street, is that they had spaces available. I wasn't taking up, you know, I wasn't blocking anyone else from parking. It was four o'clock in the afternoon on Wednesday. And I just thought it was a really rude policy that they would just, you know, honor their, I mean, they obviously, apparently have a legal right. Although, since I looked into that, it is supposed to be posted conspicuously, which it is not posted conspicuously in that parking lot, not like it is at the post office parking lot, which clearly explains to you that they don't want you parking there if you're shopping somewhere else, they don't want you parking there if you're hiking. And if you do park there, your car will be towed, and then it tells you where to go and get your car, and it tells you the fine of two hundred and fifty dollars, which I still think is an equivalent fine to pay for a five-minute tow job across the street. So my point is that I live in New Falls, I lived here for eight years. I'm a, you know, good resident, I shop in New Falls, I'm shopping at Salvation Army to save money, and also to supply, I work at Semi New Falls, I run a theater, theater and costume shop. So I buy clothes there that we use on our stays. So my point was that it was mean and neighborly, and I thought, not in Falls, not in Falls that I would like to live in. So that's my public statement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just quickly, Alan, I just thought it would be important to maybe look at, do you have any existing laws regarding towing? Or just to evaluate those, if that was a good opportunity to do that? Because I did think it was a little exorbitant as well.
After I got that email, I got, I emailed the village attorney to see if it's legally possible for us to have a rolling rates and fines for towing. I'll wait till, I'll see what happens when I hear back.
The problem with that is that she's talking about a private parking lot.
Yep.
And they can employ whoever they want. The question is, do we, since we're talking about a lot of parking in the village anyway, I'll make a call and see what I can find out.
I know, I'm just gonna give this to Daniel, but I don't, I don't, I looked this up today, and it appears to say that New York State law, that's somehow available to me on the internet, requires it not to be more than a hundred dollars, but...
Yeah, I'll certainly look into that. I just thought it was important for her to come out.
Yeah, and I think in light of the winter that is coming and our, you know, twenty-four-hour rule, you know, having people park in the streets, and I think we should, well, like into the...
I think the real question here is, what can we do as a community to provide more parking? And I think putting on... And I think putting on owners' regulations to restrict parking and not allowing parking in the community is not helping anyone. It hurts your businesses. It hurts your residents. And in this case, it was a private lot. So you can't control what happens in a private lot. And, you know, I would just ask, you know, you had mentioned that it was a theater. How would you feel if everyone in the community parked in the theater parking lot prior to a show that night? What would you do then? So now you have no parking spaces. So saying it's a business's fault for towing or a private person is not understanding that person is paying for all the upkeep, maintenance and run business. And that's what's generating the jobs, generates and maintains the community. So, I mean, I think before, and, you know, I was disappointed to see, you know, the village is looking at putting in parking permits. You know, that's not helpful at all to any of the businesses or to the community. You're just, you're taking away what little parking we have. Instead, let's spend energy on finding areas for municipal parking. That's the true answer here. The answer here is, what can we do to change laws about towing? What can we do to people that own private lots? The answer is, what can we do to create more parking?
Well, we have people that we want to hear from and I don't think this is the time to discuss this.
We'll have plenty of time to talk about parking. It'll be coming up soon. We'll have plenty of time to talk about parking.
Right.
But thank you for coming, Alan.
Well, actually, parking is a large part of overall the movie.
You figured you would have a segue, Ben.
I would have been disappointed if you didn't use that as your segue.
Well, we had time there and, yes. And I want to thank you all for having us here, but in reality, whenever you're working in a situation where you have a vibrant downtown, a big component of that vibrancy is parking. It's parking circulation. It's the ability for people to come. Some people like to be able to sit in front of their shops and park right there, not in the two-window shop. I gave a presentation at NICOM. I'm dating myself now because when we're over there in the other room, we start talking how long we've actually known each other, how long we've been working together. And we've been working together for almost 15 years. Put that in context, my owner's kid was eight and now he's helping me with my computers. And he's 23. So we started looking back and wow. Parking was a big issue in Port Jurors when we started talking about their Main Street downtown revitalization. And back in '06 and '07, and the NICOM kept asking us to speak on downtown revitalization. There was a theory that they kept saying, everyone needs parking. And then we started taking downtowns like in New Paltz and superimposing them on shopping malls. And if anyone knows Cross Gates or in McKims who are down in Woodbury Commons, you can fit five or six New Paltz downtowns in Woodbury Commons. Yet people have a problem parking there and walking all the way across to the next alley. It's a concept that people see in downtowns that they want parked around the front. And then we start talking about how we can get to shared parking, how we can use our codes to have our businesses work together. How can those businesses that have nighttime or evening activities work with those that have daytime activities to share the parking lots? You can take that downtown and bring up the village speculator up into Hamilton County, where they have the same problem. They want to have a hotel, one parking spot per room plus one for 60 feet in the restaurant, which is now 30 feet, you know, 30 spots over. What can they do? While the owner is now talking to the bank, saying, "You don't need parking at night because you're done at 4 o'clock. How can we have shared agreements?" So when you're talking about downtown revitalization, talking about a very vibrant mix of businesses, of establishments, of retail, of banking and finances, restaurants, shops, working together to bring that feel that you were, she just left. That you were talking about the feel of New Paltz, that sense of community that you're looking for is something that the businesses have to tie into, have to understand and embrace. Because what makes New Paltz unique is that feeling of community. And that's what really made us interested in your project. And we're a small firm up in Holland and we have RFPs all over the state, actually all over the Northeast. And we're trying to find those projects that are very unique to us, that can bring something special to what my whole team has. From town gown relationships to economic market analysis, to those projects that can marry together agriculture and farmland protection with economic development, with state campuses, with urban design and architecture, and bring it all together. So when we go through our presentation about who we are and what we're doing and what we learned about you, we want to bring about that we feel, just as you do, that New Paltz is a unique location. It's something that's very, very special to the eastern part of our state. There's almost no place else like New Paltz besides Cornell and Ithaca maybe, in the central part of our state. So we come here, we see the restaurants. I was joking with Brandon, by the way, I do promise, the next time I come to actually stop early, every time I come to New Paltz, I say, "I'm gonna try a new restaurant and I can't find the parking." No, I know you said that. It's not a play on that. I always end up in the Gilded Honor. And I can't say I end up there because it's a great destination, but I want to try Main Street East Room. Told I have to go to Main Street East Room. I have to try the other restaurants. I have to go to the new Irish restaurant that's opening up. And I can't find the parking right away. End up at the same place. So next time I come, I will try and get a restaurant, I promise.
You've heard walking in, you've heard walking in New Paltz.
I know. You gotta find the parking.
So park at the honor and walk up to the east road. Trust me, we'll smooth it over with the owners.
Don't get up yet.
Don't get up until. I used to joke around that I'd go to communities and I'd get a haircut in every community that I worked in. But that obviously doesn't work that well anymore because they can't make any money off it. So now we use the restaurants and the other establishments. It's great. But by introduction, I want to introduce my team if you don't mind. My name is Ben Sidon. I am the director of planning at the Berge Group. I've been with them for about 16 years and working with communities for over 21 years now, all over New York State, a little bit Connecticut and Virginia, New Jersey, Pennsylvania. My planning services manager is Nicole Allen. She'll be the project manager on this. And she'll be giving the majority of the discussions on the approach and our understanding of how we want to work together. Ellen Pamerick is our market analyst. And when we put together teams, we don't just pick and choose based upon specialties. We kind of want to find the people that A, we work well with, that we worked before with, and also those that have unique specialties for your project. There are many market analysts out there in New York State, actually throughout the entire country. But Ellen brings to bear a full understanding of downtown revitalization, of town gown relationships, and farmland protection and agriculture, and how it works together in a village and town environment. And we've been working together. I had hair when we started. Let's put it that way. And then Mary Moore Wollinger, she is a urban designer extraordinaire. We've worked together also since about 2000, 2001, when they were the synthesis architects. And one of the great things about what Mary Moore brings is this unique understanding of urban design and her firmness architecture. Both together, actually Place Alliance is now where she is, the now partners, but Place Alliance is unique. And they're not just in one spot. They have many locations. They're collaborative. As you read from our proposal, their architects and national, international architects are based out of Florida and Orlando. And the urban design team right here in Snackley by opposite, together they have a symbiotic relationship. The other unique thing about Place Alliance though is they have an instrumental in New York Rising. As we all know, you've been part of the Ulster County New York Rising Plan. Their projects throughout the cast, the southern tier of New York State have gotten the most funding for revitalization based upon engagement process. They're able to pull out from the public what they want to see, also if it actually works. And there's a big difference. A lot of people will get involved in public charrette processes, envisioning, and come up with great ornate plans that never get done. Now, we used to use the word, and Ellen being a literary giant always tells me, "Implementable is not a word." Every community I say, "We develop implementable plans," she kicks me. Thank gosh, she's over there. But she likes to say that the projects tend to be implemented. To me, everything we want to do, we want to see actually done. So our forte, we've secured $128 million just since 2000 in developing plans that get implemented. So our collective team wants to bring to bear our resources to one, what we believe is one of the most unique projects. And that's New Paltz Town Comprehension Plan. It's unique not only in location, but it's unique in that it's a town and a village working together. A lot of times, people try to say they work together. I don't know if you've looked at other joint plans or other towns that have a village that don't work together, the plan's like a donut hole. The Main Street is the vital part of the community and you leave the village out. You don't really have a full picture of what actually happens, how they have to work together. So seeing that the town and village began across a few years back of looking at consolidation, looking at financial, working together in different services from COVID compliant boards all the way through, and ended up saying, you know, "We really still want to work together on a joint comprehensive plan." That's kudos to you. That makes it unique. And that makes it interesting. Realizing that if you're just doing a village comprehensive plan, you really won't be worrying about agriculture, farmland protection, open space management. And in the town side, you won't be always looking at a Main Street type remix. But together you have that opportunity to really build the community as a whole. That's unique and that's exciting. And that's why we wanted to work with you guys on this project. In our proposal, you'll see our teams, we recognize that what we want to do is realize that the village and the town, you are a client. It's your plan. You can look back and say, "Well, the Berge has had 100 clients in the last 10 years," but it's not our client. This is your plan, your values. So what we want to do is bring our experience, help you figure out where you are, where you want to be, and how you want to get there. What unique tools can we bring to bear to frame those goals through implementation stage? And comprehensive plan is your vision, but the vision's only going to be good as the tools that we can provide to you for implementing those steps. Whether it's zoning, whether it's design guidelines, whether it's my engineers working with you on waste water issues. You had a number of stormwater mitigation issues that came up during the flooding. That all comes to bear in our process. Why I only have my planning and design team here, just so you all know, as director of planning, I bring to bear all my engineers as well. My wastewater engineers, my civil engineers, my site engineers, and my water engineers are all available to the project team as the component is needed. So we realize that this really hard infrastructure issues from flooding on through that have to be reviewed, incorporated in. Our engineers can work on the parking and the traffic circulation issues. They can work on transflooding and development. All the issues that you see fit in a planning stage still have to be vetted in a real-world practicality. And that's where our engineers come to bear. Place Alliance, Mary Moore, she'll be working on the public facilitation, the public engagement, the graphics, the design, as well as the urban component of how will things look, how will things feel in your environment? How do they fit? How does the streetscape fit? How does the building height fit? How does the density fit? How does the walkability, the streetscape fit? How and what does your community look like? And how does that fit to the overall vision? And how can that grow over the next 10, 20 years? And then Ellen, she's our marketing person. She's gonna be looking at how does it work in reality? Is it physically responsible? Can it actually happen? Do we have the real-world numbers and economics to make your vision actually occur? Or is it Disneyland on paper? So these are the aspects that we bring to bear at our table. Now, before I turn it over to Nicole, I want to say that when we write your proposal, there are many parts to that proposal. It's basically everything you could possibly want in a comprehensive plan. But the way we approached the hour scope and the way we were talking today is we tried to use what budget we had originally in your old comprehensive plan as a starting point. Every single part of our scope of services is flexible. The first thing that we would actually do is re-scope it with you based upon what we learned tonight and what you want to provide. Because when anybody comes in, whether it's the folks over before us or John after us, we provide a scope of services based upon our best understanding of the time that the RFP is released. Through discussion, through coordination, through partnering with you, we may get a better idea of what you're looking for, which may change how that scope can actually roll out. Also, we want to help you figure out how to best get a document in preference, basically before the CFA comes out, of some sort to have a draft comprehensive plan. You can then use that to get the funding for the rest of it through the consolidative funding application round. Whether you go through cleaner, greener programs, or you go through parks programs, or visioning programs, or economic development. Those can be tied right back to this plan. So you may be able to take your comprehensive plan as a segment, say it makes you a much stronger joint application for more state partnerships going forward. And we'll talk about that during implementation. We just want to let you know that's how we approached the dominant scope. And with that, I'll turn over Nicole and talk about the project, understanding where we are.
All right. And so where do we start? We started with just trying to get to know you as well. So this is what we call our little snapshot. Our quick understanding, taking a quick look at what you've done, where you are, where you're trying to go, trying to get to know you a little bit. And all this information on this slide is not new to you, but it's just helping us frame where we are and looking at both the town and village together. So understanding that you are a mature village, that you have a lot of quaint architecture, quaint design that's already in place. You have a framework that is going to need to be worked with. It's not a fresh green start. It's not an open playing field. There's a lot of effort that will have to go in to making sure that what we've come up with as a design team and a planning team really works with what you have already so that you can build and grow the way you want to. You have a population that is growing. You have development pressures that are in place. They are real. They are present and they're not going away. And so working with those pressures so that you have the best opportunities going forward in what you achieve as part of this plan so that you have your best foot forward going to the next step. And looking at the current economic engine, the Siney Paltz just was one of that big grant, the $10 million grant to help with the college and doing engineers and building that program there. It's going to be a huge economic engine for the college, which also then becomes an economic engine for your community. And plays into the demographics that you have here in place with the median age of 25, which is extremely young, getting back into that town gown atmosphere. So working with what you have as a demographic, working with what you're going to have in the future so you can start making those predictions so that you can start to plan with what is the appropriate next step for land use, for economics, for housing. All of that is in place with what your demographics are. And balancing even on the financial side, what people aren't able to afford, what they're going to be able to afford, and then blending in with mature demographics that you also have in place. Recognizing that the median house is $300,000. So how do you balance that when it's a population that can't afford that? So just looking at all of those as part of what that goal is and making that a joint comprehensive plan that looks at both the town and the village. So when I say goal, it's really to reinvigorate. It's to take a hard look at your town and your village and see how you generate new growth in the best foot forward for your future vision together. And when we look at what some of the goals were that came out of your RFP process, it was to serve an implementation process that's very flexible. And what we plan to achieve for you is a concept that both the town and the village can then implement separately or together, but it would be concepts that would be implementable. I think we use the word often. That Webster will put it in.
Googling is a word now.
Correct. Implementable is a key piece there. And make sure that it represents the vision that you want going forward. So it's going to be a community-driven effort and that's going to be a key piece. And as part of our design aspect in the charrette process, that is where we begin. And we make sure that whatever effort goes forward, it is vetted and developed and approved with the public as well. And then make sure that it's also going to marry with the town and village officials needs as well. So everybody's on the same page throughout the process. And then encouraging a mix of uses going forward so that you meet all those demographic needs that I mentioned and that you have the blended use so that you have a sustainable future. You're not just focusing on one type of demographic that then pushes out another one so that you have a balanced community. So with that in mind, all the elements then to kind of recapture as part of this process that need to be looked at. Because you have that mature infrastructure in place, you need to promote good infill. You need to be able to look at what info you need, where it can appropriately go. Talking about the parking, where can you then best fit some future village parking or shared municipal parking? How do you incorporate a garage? How do you then best fit it so that it matches your infrastructure from a building standpoint? That it's married into the massing and scale and character of the village infrastructure from a building standpoint? And all that has to be emphasized in an appropriate design manner. It has to best fit the form. And so we recognize all of those elements would be a key piece as we go forward as part of that design vetting. So as Ben mentioned, our quote, we really broke it out into four phases, we broke all the phases for the purpose. And we looked at your RFP. There are a multitude of tasks included. And so we tried to kind of rejuggle them and put them into a phase that would kind of match that initial budget that we were just from a snapshot, trying to imagine what you were able to do at this point. And then everything else that was more on an implementation side, we put it into Phase Four so that if you got the grant funding, we could develop this town plan in an efficient manner so that you could then apply and keep the progress growing. That would be Phase Four, so an implementable task. So as part of that, Phase One is really the analysis. This is all your inventory and analysis. These are the tasks related to developing your key assessment, looking at the existing plans that you have in place. You've done a lot of planning over the years. And what we want to make sure that happens going forward is that you're not going backwards. We're not starting over. We want to make sure that what you've done to date is incorporated and put into something that is a comprehensive plan. That's the whole idea, that it's all together. One of the things we've done in other communities is created a matrix. We've taken a hard look at all those existing plans, pulled together all the goals and strategies and said, "Okay, what have you achieved? What can we knock off this list so we don't have to put it on the next list? What is still relevant? What do we throw away? What is not important anymore? What has happened that makes this not able to happen?" So I think taking a look at all of those plans so that you stay current is part of what your comprehensive plan needs to be. And that is at the town level and the village level so that they're all put together appropriately. And then as part of that, you take a look at all your existing resources and make sure that you're able to map them, you identify them, and start looking at a preliminary market analysis, which Ellen is going to assist with that portion of it.
Sure, yeah. Just to mention a couple. I mean, really, the goal of the preliminary market analysis is to understand what are some of the issues and trends that affect development and development opportunities in both the town and the village. And, you know, we don't want to reinvent the wheel, so certainly we'll be looking at some of those previous plans and studies. I mean, for example, in terms of some of the socioeconomic conditions. I know that there was some analysis done in the regional housing needs study a couple of years ago. So certainly, we're going to be taking that into account. But we'll also be looking at current and projected demographic trends, socioeconomic trends, you know, income levels in the town. And also a lot about what's going on with the economy, understanding. the economy, understanding where your major employers, what kind of mix of businesses do you have here, you know, in terms of industry, or size, or type? Where are people coming from, when they're coming to town to work versus where residents going? You know, are people having to commute long distances to go to work, or are there some more opportunities here? And also, we'll be looking at, you know, what are some of the existing land use and development patterns? We also want to understand what's happening, what's going on around you that's really important to understand, the regional context. Not only what's going on here in New Paltz, but also in other parts of Ulster County, and even the Mid Hudson Valley, what's going on in terms of development, in terms of different land uses, different trends in the market and the real estate market, so we really want to understand that. And I think as part of this preliminary market analysis, we would also start doing some interviewing. We'd certainly be talking with municipal leaders and staff about some of the issues in terms of economic development, or some of the issues that might be related to housing needs. But I think it's also really important to start talking with some of your employers, and certainly SUNY New Paltz has to be a big part of that, of just being a major employer in other communities. We have one interviews, but we've also done business roundtables, which are really helpful, because we can get, you know, a number of different people in the room together and, you know, kind of have a good exchange of ideas and get feedback from a lot of people at one time. But that's something that's, you know, we're flexible on, and we could, you know, we could do a business survey, we could do business roundtables, we could do one-on-one interviews. But ultimately, really, the goal of the market analysis is to identify some possible commercial, residential, and other land uses and development opportunities as we go forward with the plan.
No, I understand that Ellen mentioned SUNY New Paltz. I do understand that there are some tensions with SUNY New Paltz. Right, anyways, in any college-town issue, whether it's University of Albany, or we're living right now in what they call one of the top college towns, I don't know where they get that from, we just have a lot of colleges in Albany, so I don't know if that means you're a good college town or not, but there are issues with universities, from tax issues, and nonprofit status, not paying their full amount of taxes, to pilots, and I understand that's happening in the residential community right now in the [inaudible]. So I understand there may be issues that have, how should I say, more tense, more, because they have more tense outcomes than others. However, we do have to recognize that they are here, and they're not going anywhere, so they are a stakeholder in the comprehensive planning process. How we engage them is part of our discussions, but they will have, they have an impact on your taxable properties, they have an impact on your residential community, they have impact, though, on the spending of the students in the village and town, but they also have a unique opportunity to keep the students here after they graduate. We have a brain drain statewide, and a huge economic opportunity that college towns, I put that in parentheses, have, is how do we keep them in our, either in our neighborhood or our region, creating their businesses? How can we help them? Once we train them, once we educate them, how can we get them to stay here and not only marry, raise their families and go forward, but how can we make them productive parts of our society? We have huge opportunities from commerce, to business, incubators, to economic growth. Ellen mentioned something very unique, like the regional approach. Many times, comprehensive plans only look at the community or the towns surrounding the community, wherever you are, in any part of our country. What we look at is the region, not only because Ellen said it, but because it's part of the Mid Hudson Valley, the governor's regional councils, but our youth, our students, our folks then, in their early twenties, they want a certain type of lifestyle, a certain type of social atmosphere, a certain type of hipness, if you may. I know it sounds, I'm getting old, I know it sounds weird when I say the word hip, especially when we're talking about fifteen, twenty years ago. But what they're looking for, they have right here in New Paltz, more than anywhere else in New York State, they have it right here. They're a small-town feel, yet that urban chic, that restaurant, entertainment, they want to stay here. So how can we find the businesses that those folks want built, create, or working? How can we get them here, or how can we tell them that there's one right around the corner that live here? So how that's the kind of thing you want to approach, not only with the issues that they have between New Paltz as a village town, and SUNY, and Research Foundation, but also as it relates to the long-term opportunities that they have to stay here, stay local and grow. So I just want to go off to that, sorry.
Our Phase Two is really the public participation phase. While it's not something that's going to happen singularly as part of this phase, it's really something that is fluid and happens over the whole entire process, we're just emphasizing it in this particular segment here. And one of the things that we will make sure happens as part of the planning process is that the public is educated and brought into the process continuously, so that they don't just go to a meeting and then, okay, now what? I'm waiting three months, four months, five months, or something, what's the next step? So they need to be continually updated as to what's going on. And we threw in your folder there, an example of just a newsletter, something that can be done, it gives them a quick highlight, you can do it several times throughout the process, so that it's something that's either on the websites, something that they have access to, so that if someone is ever wondering, they know that there's still those quick hits that are going through as part of the process. And so, as part of this segment, what we want to emphasize is really the charrette. And I'm going to turn it over to Mary Moore to really dive into.
We refer to our projects, even when we call it intensive design charrette process. And so, I think this one would be a two-day process. We would show up in the morning, we would work with you to identify a location right here, we can be right in the middle of it, and it's great, because that way, as we're designing and working, we have questions, you literally step right outside the door, or you pull somebody in from down the hall who might have that answer. But it allows for a lot of feedback throughout the whole process. And so, we come in, we take a look around, we bring all our mapping and things with us, and we usually do a series of different sort of interactive formats throughout that, which is nice, because we can catch people at different times of the day, so there's more flexibility in when people participate, and also so that it is a really interactive process. So we get ideas for what people are looking for, and by that time, people have a really good understanding of kind of the existing conditions. And then, we start drawing on ideas and developing those concepts, and during the day, we'll have sort of an open house where stakeholders, committee members, staff, we can decide whoever we want to be part of that process, we can work that out together, but there's a chance for those people to come in, take a look at what we're doing, say, oh, I really like this, oh, that's not going to work, but this is easy. And so, it's a really, we work hand-in-hand to develop something that's really tailored to your community and that's more informed. And then, as part of that process, by the end of it, within, you know, the two days, you have some ideas and you have things on paper, and so that gets presented to the public. And it's a great way to really build momentum and get feedback right away, because people are, you know, they're hearing their, they're expressing their ideas the first night, and they're actually seeing something on paper the second night. And it also is great, because not everybody, I think a lot of times, the tendency is to ask people to give them a pen and ask them to design it, but that's not necessarily what they feel the most comfortable doing. So if you can present a couple of plans and a couple of options, it's easier for people to be able to react to something and say, oh, yeah, I like that, or, no, I don't like that, or can we be part of this one and part of that one? And so, that's been a really successful process for us, and we are able to, based on sort of our understanding, the way we approach our projects is kind of as a design consortium, so we take a look at what's our focus, what are sort of the design, and what are we trying to achieve, and who do we need to pull in as part of this process? So our counterparts in Florida, they've done a lot of work, and New York State, they've done some work even in the Hyde Park area, not too far from here, and they have a very strong background in urban design and architecture, and they've developed a lot of architectural standards, and have a really good understanding of how certain building types can meet your needs. And then, my partner Ian Law and I, we work in urban design and come at it from a landscape architecture perspective, so we work really well together, because we bring those different perspectives together. And by working on the ground, we're, you know, right in the community, we're able to sort of walk outside and test those visions and pace things off. And our partners in Florida have had a lot of experience with working with communities of all different sizes, and different types of zoning approaches, and building types. And with our experience, we have statistics kind of in our head, sort of, you know, how much our footage works for this or that. And what's nice about working with Ellen and the way the process works is that it's not just that she's going to come in and say, well, this is what the market's going to support, and you guys do your thing. It'll be much more interactive, and we'll be, she'll be able to help test the ideas that we're bringing to the table, and go back and forth, so it is something that's really going to work with your community. And a lot of times, we see that, that plans, you can get these great ideas, and if you don't get the scale and context right, it can be a huge problem. It's really important to get that vision right from the beginning, so that if you're amending your zoning and tailoring all of your things towards making that happen, you want to make sure whatever you're trying to make happen is really going to work, that it is the right scale and the right size, and that there's the right relationship between one building and another building, or, and there's the right amount of focus on pedestrian and bicycle and multimodal transportation to alleviate some of the, you know, some congestion issues.
Sure, what Mary Moore does, by the way, is they, it's almost magical. I don't want to sound too Disney-like, when I said before, we don't want to create a Disneyland, but what we do in this process is we have stakeholder interviews and visioning processes before we get to the charrette, so we get a full understanding of your community as a whole. And then, over a two-day period, probably it's two and a half, because we get there the night before, and talking to people in the restaurants, I actually go knocking doors outside, only in daytime, you know, got to call the cops on first. And I ask people, almost a man on the street, what they think, and what their ideas, and bring those ideas in, but through the two-day charrette process is open. We'll have meetings all throughout the day, we have designers working on the imagery, we ask people their opinions, we get their word-rolls, we understand what you all want to see in your community, and then we start designing it in real time. They have their computers, their staff, their pencils, and people can come in any time of the day and provide input. So over that two-day period, they finish with an image, a rendering, that really reflects what you all said you wanted. It's not one of those issues where you wait three or four months, the next meeting, and you have planning fatigue going on. It's really a two-day process of intense charrette, which comes after public participation, and then continues with online workshops, with online surveys, getting more info, that allows you really to see, to really invest, in a short period of time. Heck, we're all busy. Everyone has other meetings, and village boards, and town boards, and families, and soccer games, and kids going to dance, and Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts, and it's hard to get out. But if you can plan enough time in advance, let the public know when this is going to happen, and each of you go to your constituencies, each of us do our job, and get the public out, you can have hundreds of people together in a series of two-day symposiums or workshops that come out with a really neat, magical impression of what did you want? Not what Mary Moore just designs that night, or the market says is going to bear, but what you as a community want to see. And that's when you get really good people pumped up. That's what they actually see. And people say, a picture's worth a thousand words. Parent boss Ian says, the man's worth 10,000 words, because they talk a lot. But with this, you really get that poster of what New Paltz wants to be, and that really lends itself to getting that public support towards implementation across municipal boundaries, and it's really natural that they do. And that's how I had to share that, with their chicken be happy in the [inaudible].
And this first one's going to be more of a general approach, when you get more to implementation stage, that's when we'll look like really specifically at sort of the target sites. But I want to say, back up for a second, and say, I was so excited when I read your RFP and some of the studies that you've done. My other hat that I wear is I helped found Schenectady Green Market, which is our big destination market in downtown Schenectady. And so, I do a lot with local food activism and a lot of herbs, and I often speak on that, and how important it is that you can't just look at how to develop the urban core, you also have to look at how to protect the open space and the agricultural, and if the two groups aren't working together, then it's never going to happen. So I was really excited to see that the town and the village are working together on this, and that there's a lot of really positive moves to do all the things you want to do in plant, like good planning. And so, being able to look at those relationships together and how they can support one another, I think is really wonderful. And you're in this area where, you know, you're part of the county, that's part of the whole Hudson County bounty, and you've got this wonderful, beautiful agricultural land, and there's all this agriculture as a market for local food and agricultural tourism, and so, looking for ways that your plan can take advantage of that and celebrate it, and really finding the right balance that works for town and village, and so that they support one another as much as possible, and really capitalizing on the economic opportunities there.
So it's kind of an end product that would come out of this planning process, would be a design schematic for both the town and village, that would outline all of these future land use ideas for both where you want to learn that agriculture, where you want to emphasize development, where you would like to see some of the trans-oriented design happen, where some of those larger connections could occur, and then also start picking out those key sites for redevelopment, that would be as part of that next step. So, and then, putting some life to it as well. So it would be a design element that would really be, let's say, the kind of the climax of the planning process, because it is very, very exciting, and that's where we have to make sure, as part of the planning process, that the public is, through the beginning, you get really excited, and then you have to make sure that they stay involved and see it through to the end, so that they don't lose interest or get disappointed that there is a little bit more planning that has to occur after that exciting meeting. Which brings us to Phase Three of the Joint Master Plan. And this is where we pull all of that information in, into a comprehensive plan that has your goals, your strategies, and the implementation pieces that outline what you need to do. Marry all those strategies and goals with funding opportunities, so that you know where the grants are, you know where the funding stream is, you know who's responsible, putting that ownership back on individual agencies, officials, partners, whether it be with a school, whether it be with DOT, any of those partners that you need to have in place, and making sure that everybody has ownership in the planning process, so that it doesn't sit on the shelf, and that it is actively sought after, so that you have something of an implementable planning process. And then, as part of that, you really find two in any of those visions that Mary Moore was talking about, so that you have a final vision, a final schematic, and that's really going to be a lot of what is the next step. So it's going to speak for both town and village of New Paltz, and saying, this is what we want, and this is our vision, so help us get to that next step. And as part of that, we put everything else kind of in Phase Four of implementation, because that really is the next step. So once you kind of hold all those ideas together, you've heard the public wants, you've expressed what the committee wants, and what the town and village officials want, and then you are able to look at what the market said from a preliminary standpoint, you're able to understand what those key sites are, and take them to the next level of development, and be able to say, okay, here's what we can do, this is feasible, this is vetted now as part of the planning process. We're able to look at a much larger schematic now, thus parking, circulation, access, because you first have to know what your vision is, before you can even get to that point. So as part of that emphasis, once you know what your vision is, then you start figuring out, how do I make it work? Where are my access points? How do I start creating some of the shared circulation lots? How do I pull it all together to make it function the way it needs to? And how do I then codify it as part of the code that needs to be in place, or both town and village, and any other other regulations that need to be in place, so that you have the correct policies to make sure that your vision is achievable? And as part of the preferred site for content plan, if you want to just add anything to that, or with...
I mean, we'll make sure we leave plenty of time to answer your questions. But essentially, it would be looking at how much smaller scale, and sort of identifying smaller projects that you can begin to get a design for, to figure out how those solve some of the issues or concerns that come to the forefront, and looking at available parcels, or parcels where it makes sense to do things, but looking at what might happen there, and to begin to help develop design, so that you can identify available funding, or reach out to developers who might be able to help you reach those goals, but it's going to get you that much further, so that you have the materials to be able to go after funding, or to figure out how to take it to the next level and actually get something built.
Same with the top of the design guidelines, zoning amendments, potential circulation, access plans, those are all fundable projects for the consolidated funding application. It's all part of implementation, but our experience, that it can get you, or try to get you the funding, help offset village and town cost plus processes. Again, we've been doing that since, well, since the beginning of the firm in '64, but since I started tracking in 2,128 million dollars of funding. So we are very confident that with your comprehensive plan, coupled with the timing, you can get partially funding for those projects as part of implementation.
So kind of throws us into the schedule, what we were thinking. When we put this together back in August, it was the idea of how do we get as much done as quickly as possible, so that you can get those grants, with the grant being the ultimate goals, that you're able to keep the momentum, keep the implementation. And so, we were thinking it would be a nine-month schedule with what we outlined from the first three phases. When we can compress that, we can flush out the exact scope of view, and all of that is flexible, as Ben mentioned at the beginning. Any of those items, if there's something of a greater priority or a greater need that needs to be looked at, we just work with you to flush that out.
Speed, by the way, does not mean shortchanging, it does not mean rushing, it means that we can bring to bear all the resources that our combined organizations to meet your schedule, whatever happens. If you want it longer, it can be longer, if you want it more compressed, we have the resources to do that right here in New York, right here in Long Island.
When I say speed, I was thinking, I want to make sure you meet the next CFA deadline. So, so having enough in place. It doesn't have to mean that it's adopted, it just means that you need to get through the visioning process, you need to have enough of your goals and strategies, so that you can use it in your future grant applications, and say, we've vetted it, this is what we want, we're committed to it, help us pay for it, now help us get that coming. So that's part of the process.
I didn't mean to interrupt you.
That's okay.
Oh my god, you're rushing this process.
No worries. It's not a rushing process. And similarly, we've outlined kind of another 10 to 12 months for the other items, and they can be moved up, should grant funding or municipal funding be budgeted towards it, or if you've already allocated that funding, all of that can be rolled into a, we can bring into timeline. But we're thinking from a standpoint, we want to start with the market analysis, flush that out, then work in those strategic sites, be able to understand where exactly those are going to go, and make sure that they fit the economic analysis. Your design guidelines would then come after you've kind of developed your sites, so you kind of, it's a progression, and then you codify what you've said you wanted. So it's kind of a progression of elements, that you're not missing any steps, you're not putting the cart before the horse, you want to know that all of the pieces kind of flow, so that the end product is ready to go.
Now, what makes this whole process unique is that our tools are bringing to bear to this process. So we mentioned before that we're planners, engineers, urban designers, for economic developers, we're grant writers. My surveyors won't be part of this process unless you need something surveying on the side. But we raise all our team together. We're one shop, and while we may be three different firms, we have worked so long together, we're really one organization working together, one team. And what's unique about us is we don't just segment, we don't say, Mary Moore, go do your urban design, or Ellen, do your marketing analysis. It comes down to working with you all here at the meetings, at the stakeholders, we're all there, we're talking about our roundtables, we're there, when we're coming with goals or recommendations, we're all together. It isn't a sub-consonant consultant process, it's we're one team, and that team really begins with you all, and we applaud you in this process. Going back to what we mentioned before, our plan is don't sit on the shelf, and I know a lot of planners say that, but we have the hard statistics to back up what we're able to do. Hopefully, in a few weeks, it was supposed to be announced last week, the CFA announcement, but I think now it's going to happen after the election, we're going back and forth. You don't want to get anyone upset before the election. We hope to have another six or seven million dollars of funding out of that round that we're able to secure for our two-hour fines. So it's very important that we believe that comprehensive planning is unique, it's a tool, it's a vision, but it's one that can be implemented with proper planning, bringing to bear all the resources to what you want to see, and have it rooted in reality. So I think the next part, and what's unique about our team also, is we have one of the most in-depth resumes as regards to sharing services and interest and cooperation in state. From the planning engineering all the way through, we're doing distribution studies, consultation studies, highway studies, from Columbia County water studies to pork facility studies up in St. Lawrence County, Albany County Highway, joint comprehensive planning we did in Athens, the village and the town. We do not shy away from any project as a town and a village issue. A lot of people go, whoa, there's two municipalities, we don't want to touch that. We really want to work together, almost as, I don't want to call them mediators, that don't see to being large problems, but there's always a process in where it's a village issue or a town issue, we want it all put together as one community issue. Up in Salem in Washington County, it's one community, with a village or town, they're lucky they have the same name, Salem. Whereas down in Bloomburg and Mount McMeadon, same issue. We want to work together as one community, understanding that what happens in the village impacts the town, what happens in town impacts the village, on all parts of the socioeconomic spectrum, from the schools to the housing, to agriculture, to the pedestrian issues, it's all one community. And that's what made us really jump on this opportunity. We saw the RFP, meets what we do personally in our own lives, from outdoor, from birding to hiking, to running, to agriculture, and the farmer's market, and brings us all together, it gives us an opportunity to really bring a whole being into your project. And that's pretty exciting to us professionals, we don't want to forget that. So we're really excited to be here. And with that, I want to open with any questions that you may have for us. I'm more happy to answer, my team is ready and willing and available to you. So I don't think you're not getting mad.
Thank you, Jason.
Thanks, Ben. Sally, you want to go ahead?
I don't.
No, you had like four the last time I asked you.
I'll add mine, you can go first.
Thanks, Jake.
In terms of the advice we've made, what is your vision of the component parts?
We typically recommend having couples from both town and village. We recommend having a different panel of stakeholders, so you could have a business owner, someone from the seniors, someone from the school should potentially be on it, someone for recreation, someone that might have a transportation element, so trying to make sure that you have all of the kind of profiles that you would typically see in a conference plan represented, historic preservation being another element, just so... What was that? Farming, agriculture, absolutely, so that everyone has a stake at the table, not to say that their voice is going to be louder or more potent than anyone's, but that just so that they make sure that they have real issues, that they are able to bring it to everyone's attention, that someone else might not be aware of.
They're all loud and potent.
They are, absolutely, and they all have a voice.
I have a question for you, Sally. Does your town and village, when you put folks on a committee, do they believe they're there as a liaison to listen, or are they there as a participant?
From an official standpoint.
From an official standpoint.
From a village committee?
Correct, and this is a joint comprehensive thing, and I'm leading you for a reason.
If you're a village board member, and you are on the committee?
Yes.
Are you a liaison to the village board that participates in the committee, or are you a liaison to your village board to share what the committee did?
The board will define that role.
The reason why I ask is that we always ask representatives of towns and villages, whatever elected officers, because at the end of the day, they're the ones that are responsible for the executive branch. But sometimes they choose not to participate, or sometimes they don't want to liaise. So at the beginning of this, we want to know, what role do you see yourselves playing in the process?
Okay, I said this earlier, so I'll say it again, I believe that we need a very representative committee, planning.
Correct.
Our planning boards, our ZBA, the college is a must, and one, I think, one from each board at most. I would think that we could construct a committee together that the two boards could trust. I would like to think that, and therefore, that committee would be advisory to the two boards. Other people have a different view.
That's good. But Sally, what we do as a matter of rule is, once the committee is formed, we also make sure that town boards and village boards, or we for the county, they all get copies of all the minutes, all the agendas, and all the information, so also being posted online for the public, so everyone knows what's happening. Where sometimes comprehensive plans fail, is when there's a committee that's created, and the legislative leaders, either village board, town board, or city council, don't participate, and that's where there's a policy versus an implementation issue. So we want to make sure that everyone knows what's happening, whether you have one person or two persons in each board, you want everybody here, will get copies of all information in the public, to the elected officials. So you know when everything is where everything is, all have the same type of opportunity to participate, both as an elected and as a resident.
No surprises at the end for anybody.
Well, we don't want to surprise you either, so...
That's one of his news.
And we are quite capable. I think that the two boards need to sit and talk about all of these things, and come up with a plan together.
We had a committee that took resumes to see who they would then put on their committee. They accepted them, so they could get a variety from the public as well, and try to get all the representatives in place, so just concepts to think about.
All right, I asked my question, you're next, Jason.
I think Susan's next.
All I was going to say was the hardest part of this whole process is going to be forming a committee that we can all trust, that has the community's best wishes in place, and not their own agenda or their own community protecting. So once we get past figuring out how we can form this committee, then I think we'll be fine.
Agreed.
It's interesting, because once, because we have this open process, it's vetted by everyone, so even our job is to see through the BS, is to see through those people that are single-issue minded, see through those fucking people.
I can assure you, my board, I can only speak for my board, because we've spoken, we will not even enter into this process unless we feel comfortable with the committee that's representing us in this process, otherwise we're not chugging down a bunch of money, so we can end up with people who are going to undermine us through the process, and we're not going to have a plan at the end that we can support. So how this committee gets formed is going to be the defining moment if we write a check.
Okay.
I'll respond to that.
Maybe you should.
These two boards have to be very careful not to undermine the community, so it's a balance.
Or each other.
And we have worked with many, many communities in the outer states, so we have, you've seen everyone, I don't want to be one of those guys that, well, I've seen everything through everything at me, but we, I can take pretty good tomatoes. I'm a good shield, I'm a good mediator.
No, no, no. Can you chuck this back?
I honestly don't think it's really going to be your problem, it's going to be our problem versus two boards to come up with the people that we feel can represent us in a holistic manner that really represents us, and once we get past that, I don't think you will have any problems. The problem is going to be us identifying those people that 10 people can feel comfortable with.
Well, you're right.
That's very cynical.
It's the truth.
We also don't have to take it at the time that's happened.
Yeah, but I don't want to talk about this committee anymore, because that's for us to talk about, I agree.
I would like to ask these guys a question, or two. The, I would like to know what your experience is in the town gown relationships, but the single biggest problem that you have identified, and how you have facilitated some solution, or at least the direction of the solution for the municipalities in question.
We've worked in many communities with town gowns, just from Plattsburgh, they have both the community college, Clinton County Community College, and so do Plattsburgh. We involve them in the economic development plan in the town of Plattsburgh, where in previous administrations, it was the city having their issues, and the town having their issues, and they forgot about the university and about the community college. We actually went to their leaders and involved them in my economic development roundtables, because their students are the ones we're trying to keep in our country, and that became part and parcel of their economic development strategy. It wasn't so much saying, hey, we're the home of Sudi Plattsburgh, it's really how can we understand what their unique skills, specialties are, and how can we develop an economic plan based in part on tourism, that we can build into hospitality, into our incubators, into our manufacturing, how can we build into it the redevelopment of the former Clinton County Airport, to provide the housing, entertainment, and the structure of almost a new village, if you may, on the old airport that's going to be attractive to those students. So town gown has a number issue. I grew up, my first camp in Albany, we had huge Sudi Albany issues back in '89, '90, so I understand the students versus the community, are they residents and they're not residents, how do they care about their community when they're 18 versus when they're 30?
Honestly, you know what I'm thinking in this community right now, what's going on? It's not so much the students, it's really the feeling in the community that the administration doesn't really care, it's like the administration's attitude is, well, it's good for the college, it's good for everybody, and they're sort of forgetting that there's actually a community that we're in partnership, and what's, this thing is for all of us.
Correct.
And that's unfortunately, I think what's a problem right now, is really, well, how do we get the college to embrace the fact that the community has needs, and how do we work together to meet those needs without the college basically just thinking that they're islands themselves?
Which isn't what Mary Moore did before, placed lines, which she opened synthesis in Schenectady, was working union college on housing, I worked at RPI, Sage, and Troy on their housing, realizing that the community really is the postcard to the university, the university is not the postcard to the community. It's a big issue with that. So we were able to, in my previous days, in Albany County, in economic development, and how do we get the university presidents, Russell Sage, to understand that, and St. Rose, if you may, that their housing needs directly impact my needs in the community, but not only taxes, because we were at, all my money went with the state and city of Albany. But how's my book, my field, my pedestrian access, how can we get you to understand that we are you, not the other way around? That's the unique of this process. When we got in Augusta County, Virginia, we involved the community college in the economic analysis, where we're out in the Schumung County, Amira, and the Schumung County, Schumung Community College, we sees, we're involved in the process, as a matter of making them understand collectively that they are part of the community, but we are their face. Nobody wants to go through the parts of Albany or Troy to get to RPI, and you have to reverse it, say, we're part of you, we're your door, we're the door to New Paltz, door to Sudi New Paltz is New Paltz.
An interesting perspective, because I'm on the planning commission in Schenectady, and my husband is a professor at Union College, and so I get to sort of hear both sides of it, but it's been really interesting. With each administration, it seems like it's gotten a little bit better, sort of learning how to work with each other, and how unions sort of have been looking to help compensate for the fact that there's so much property that's not on the tax rolls, and what can they do, because they are in the community, and there are a lot of services that also benefit Union College, and so it's been interesting to see sort of how that partnership has evolved. And the students have actually been kind of the driving force, and they've actually helped to put some pressure on the administration, and it's really supported some of the revitalization efforts that have been happening downtown. So it's been exciting to watch and see how that's happened, but it's definitely an issue that you run into with any college town, but we also have Schenectady County Community College there, and that's been another interesting relationship, where they were actually able to work with the Downtown Development Authority, and they're renting some space downtown, so students are now walking from campus into the core of downtown every day, and you've got 2,000 students walking by all the restaurants and shops, and they're releasing some parking, so there's some economic benefits coming from that relationship that weren't there before. So I think those are all, I think there's a whole host of ideas worth exploring, but it's definitely a dialogue that needs to happen all the time.
May I ask you a question, Jason? Please.
Okay, no, no, it is one, one is just, say, I've been through one in a percentage of a master plan. The town did one multiple years ago, for lack of a better term, it's pretty much a piece of junk, unfortunately, but there's a lot of good data, and it almost looks like you had a picture of, well, we had some great community meetings, and there's also a mailing done with a lot of that data included, and I'm a band this, that's my pleasure.
Absolutely, and that's what I was saying, taking what you had done, so there are some good pieces there, and we want to make sure that those are not thrown out, and that's what I suggest is really doing a hard look at it, taking a matrix to pick it apart, saying, okay, this is good, let's build on it and keep moving forward, and not just throw it up, throw out the baby in the bathwater, essentially. So you want to be able to pull that information and make sure that the public is like vetted. We really highlighted the one workshop with the two-day piece, but there really is, there really is multiple workshops, and as part of that process. So vetting those existing conditions, vetting those existing goals, making sure that you're really stepping forward rather than going backwards, so that you're building all of all ways throughout the process.
And I think Ben may have answered one of your questions, and maybe I'll invent a word. I think both boards are very interested in being very deeply involved, because we are the implementators. Is that a word?
It is, it is, thank you.
So I think you have two boards here that are very interesting, and one for very multi, you're mentioning a lot of cities and large towns, and you were mentioning where you've all had experiences, but we are, and example in this town, we have, our resource and infrastructures are very small, the developable land is very valuable, and what we really need, and what I've been trying to do for a couple of terms now, is really have a master plan that we can all go to for our planning boards. And I know the village is challenged with their boards, and we're challenged with our boards, that we don't have a document for them to refer to, and it's, we now have people looking at what land is, for lack of a better term, left.
I understand your problem.
Yeah, and so how do we get that? Is this something that you can help us get into the plan also? Is that then, it's, I'm not asking you to rewrite our code for us, but are we going to have a product?
We are.
I would like to ask him that, but I don't know if we're going to get that, but yeah, we'd like, how code change are we going to be at the end of this process, and anyone can answer that.
First of all, I haven't had the same experience with you all, I'm on the Albany County planning board, and I have to back my talents within Albany County, and look at their comprehensive plans all act thereup, from the rural communities all the way through the very big communities, so from 2,000 persons to 95,000 people. But what we do in our comprehensive plans, we always end up in a memo of recommendations for land use, so you'll be able to see what things you will need to do to update your codes as a land use recommendation next step. So besides getting the funding through the cleaner greener communities wherever you go forward, you will have a tool saying that, you know, to implement this comprehensive plan, here are the things you're going to have to hit on in your code for next step implementation.
I just want to say, I mean, you talked about us mentioning the cities or the larger communities, we really have a very large scale of projects that go from very, very, very rural to something larger. Most of our work is in small towns and villages. For example, and this will make you feel a lot better, I just did a zoning update in a town of Arietta, which has like 200 people, and they have 127 zoning districts.
Was that Henrietta?
Henrietta.
Henrietta, right outside of Syracuse.
Right, Arietta, way up there. Right, Arietta, way up there.
Oh, not Henrietta, oh, Harrietta, Harrietta. Up and down Rondex. I thought you were saying Henrietta and that's just outside of Syracuse.
Harrietta, way up there, 127.
That's all the way. Do they even have a planning board anymore?
They do.
There's a couple of those towns that got rid of their planning boards.
So, I mean, we have a very wide spectrum of scale. And we will be providing you something that your boards will be able to reference so that they can make decisions and that will help guide them as they try to, as someone on a planning board, it's very important that you have a document that you can reference for, you know, that backs up what you're asking for and so you know what you're asking for. So that's absolutely huge. And the teeth that you want in your comprehensive plan, just real quick, is really up to you too. A lot of communities want it very vague and they all want to say, well, may do this or could do this. And other communities want it to be a shall. And so when we get to those goals and strategies, it'll really be coming back to each of the boards to say, how much teeth do you want us to put in it? Because if you want to, you can have it.
Do we have any last question? Because it's eight forty.
I do have a question.
All right. Ariana and Sally, do you have another question?
You were speaking my language, talking about the green market and all the local food stuff. That's like one of my passions. So I was wondering what else, you know, the other people feel about sustainability, local food, resilient communities, maybe looking at permaculture and applying those kinds of ideals to communities? And if you have experience with that.
Alan, by the way, is working on agricultural economic development plans in Sullivan County, Orange County, Thurgis County, and Frankl County, as well as Finnish Pupun County before. So what she's able to do is balance agricultural side with the agribusiness. I'm fully firmly behind. It wasn't ten years ago, to be honest. Sustainability goes bad. Ten years ago, I thought local foods, agriculture was just a fad, we didn't need it. But as you grow and as you understand more about rural communities and the balance between fresh farm to food markets, it's really an economic development tool as well as a sustainable tool. And it's, I'm a thousand percent behind it. I wasn't, to be honest, ten years ago. I best laid a facility to go. Good job, you got that over there. I came out, I said.
I am asking about your personal politics.
I am now, I'm treated as a CSA person. For the all life.
And to couple with that, in the recent Association of Towns, I had an article that I wrote on growing agribusiness. And I'm working with some communities and building agritourism and agribusiness in their codes as well and codifying it.
That was in this month's?
This month's.
This month's Association, that was this month.
I just spoke at a farm and food forum in Skinny Alice, that's Friday, actually. And my co-presenter, I was the person, we actually were one of the few markets in the entire state that's been able to hire a full-time market manager. And she, her family has a farm. And so we went and presented together and it was really exciting. So a lot of the issues we were addressing are very real issues in this community. Things like rural gentrification and increased values of land and sort of the, it's such a complex issue that farmland preservation is good on many levels, but it also can make it more difficult for existing farmers to be able to purchase the land because the demand increases. And as people are sort of running out of Brooklyn and wanting to embrace the earth and become farmers, there's sort of more demand for that land. And there's issues with farmers who, it sounds great after two years when they realize that if they want to be a farmer, that is all they're going to be doing for the rest of their lives, they might change their mind. And so the need to really like understand farming, reach out to that community and approach it from different levels, I think is really important. And it's great to see there's so much momentum in this area right now and the support from the governor and it's.
He just got his new grant, $50,000 for it for agribusiness.
And it can be a great economic generator. So really looking at how, you know, how can we use this farmland that we have? Like, how can it do more than just be a farm? How can it really help define our community and economically sustain our community? And how can we protect it? Because everybody needs to eat.
If you like, I'll email you, share everybody's, the agribusiness articles you just wrote. How do you, basically, agribusiness is only, how can you use your zoning code to support agribusiness?
Great. Any last questions? No?
I think, just to quickly touch on that second part, I think with the permaculture. I think there's, especially with New York rising and sort of people appreciating what's happening with increased rainfall and the need to sustainably address stormwater management. There's also a lot more incentives and possibilities and things out there to do more green infrastructure and really look at that on all levels of planning and design. So that's definitely something that we're bringing to the table as well.
That's great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Just five minutes, will we swap out projectors?
Yep.
Oh, John can jump it off.
Yeah.
The Susan has to go to the ladies' room.
Either.
What's falling down?
It's not the rest of us, is it?
We apologize.
The town is breaking our stuffers.
Just like the town.
But you all very much for having us?
Thank you.
You'll try and get started quickly.
Thank you.
We apologize for taking you so long.
Thank you. So as I said, we don't have any other plans tonight.
Not yet.
Oh, I thought two were going to be here.
We're in New Paltz, we're not sure.
Can we actually have one more?
Yeah.
Did you have one more?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you. So, thanks for having us. So, how we got a little presentation for you. How do you want to run this?
Do the presentation first and then we'll ask questions.
All right. Sounds good. Okay. I'm John Bean, PM and Design. And I'll tell you a little bit about our company very briefly and then we're going to kind of have a little rolling show here with all of us. Say a little bit. So, we're glad to be here. And we really believe in the power of planning, of planning, designing. We have offices in Saratoga and downtown city. So we kind of get surrounded here. That's our building. It's got a cool old schoolhouse. It has some solar and that's one of our offices. Here's our team. We've got three of us are here tonight. Michael, Ellen, Rebecca, Noah. We're quickly traced just some of our spurs. We look back, we've been working for a decade in the community. And we're really excited about our partnership with the community. This was a great project. We were brought in, kind of helped out. There was some inventory down. We did the open space plan. And part of that was a very successful financing program. And God, that passed by, I think, like 78% of the voters voted interested in tax themselves to do this, which was really cool. And we're proud of that relationship and that project. And it was really hard to see if you guys are still looking at it. We also, part of that was looking at once the plan was done, how do you finance a plan? It's too expensive. Our tax is going to go through the roof. What's it going to cost? So we actually, instead of taking some congestural figures, we actually put together a fiscal model of the town, village, and school district budgets to look at land use and different land use scenarios, conservation, development, et cetera. We were able to look at the fiscal effect of implementing the plan. Also, a build-out analysis of the town and villages to see what would happen if you had quite a different changes happening. So, this was useful. It actually showed us, we very modest tax increase, which was real. But then over time, that would windle down as the balance paid. And actually, the long-term benefits would be really neutral to the taxpayer in terms of the cost of this program. We also, one of the things we did was the village master plan, which you guys know is older. We did a look, we did an analysis of that plan to help look at what was missing in terms of what would you want to have in a plan, kind of a visionary plan? Because a lot of the plans were done very perfunctory. They had a lot of good words, but they don't really provide practical solutions. We looked at it, did an analysis, and then I think some changes and that was done. We put together, worked on the rural housing code for the village. And we also worked, the B3 zoning in Chestnut Street, 32 North. We helped put together some code for that and helping shape that. That area, some of that's been adopted, the outer Chestnut area. We did some site plan reviews for the village as well at the time, helping look at some of the projects. We also helped set up the Open Space Committee, the Joint Committee, to implement the Open Space Plan. Help identify priority projects, work with some of the landowners in the committee to get some of those projects launched. And several of those, just to read about those today. So, you know, some of the big projects are still happening, you know, in the community. But we also worked at a bigger scale. We worked on the Open Space Plan for the region. The show went out, so just kind of refresher and all this kind of work. And part of that was, this cooperative project, and part of that was, we put together municipal legislation, which is kind of, just kind of a state cooperative agreement, which was adopted by the village, the town, and every other town as well unanimously. It's kind of partnership agreement. That was something that we drafted. You guys have been working on this. And obviously, that's a green infrastructure. It's also a tourist and economic development piece to that, which is really important. And more recently, you know, we helped, you know, address a little project here to go, it's kind of a cool little project. Green infrastructure, you know, instead of piping a stream, why don't we open it up in daylight? You know, and it's not a big project, but it's a movement toward that for you all. And we're...
And that one made it into your calendar, I believe.
We did make the calendar.
And that was actually also with the grant.
Right. And we're hoping to be in the calendar again and hope to get something even more off. And then, right now, we're working on a project with the village and the town and the county, those are county transportation, looking at the bus station transit and trying to look at way to improve that existing facility and options for other places that you could do a really nice, kind of improved transit facility in the community. We have some really cool ideas that we gathered from you all, our own ideas. And we see kind of the results of that. And we're working with the committee here, and the town and village are participating in that as well. So we've got a lot of well-done projects here. And there's even one more. My gosh. Oh, Grantland. We helped with putting that man for the village and consolidating funding application process for this year to get some help from nicer, to help some of the code work and some of that energy, to help with energy efficiency and maybe add to village policies. So, part of this context too is our firm really is, we're a fine design company. We're, Cynthia is the president. We're a limited business enterprise. We're also a New York State certified, this is WBE, we're a disadvantaged business enterprise for federally funded projects. And basically, we're an outreach, you know. We should be, well, it's working. I think the planners, the next generation will be. We do feel and we do recognize that I'm really proud of our work. And it really has enriched the lives of many, many people in many different ways in the community and everywhere. We're very proud of it. And Michael's going to tell you a little bit about some of our projects. And Rebecca's telling you, we're going to zoom in on one project in particular we want to share with you. Not that it's what we would do for you, but just to show you some of our capabilities.
Thank you. Well, as John mentioned, that was basically a sort of an overview of a lot of the work that we've done here in New Paltz, in the town and the village. We've also done comprehensive plans, neighborhood plans, and master plans in towns and villages all over New York State. Most or all of these plans that you see have all been adopted. They've all been implemented in some form or another through like a zoning rewrite and so forth, or other implementation. So our plans have a good track record of getting implemented. They usually don't just sit on a shelf somewhere, which a lot of plans fall victim to. And that's something that we're very proud of. And a lot of our work has also won awards. We've won awards from both the National APA, American Planning Association, as well as Uptown York Chapter, the American Planning, New York Planning Federation. And most recently, just this year, we just learned that one of our projects in Arbor Hill, that we worked on, the Arbor Hill Neighborhood Plan, just won a national award for the great places in America for the implementation of our plan, which was the Arbor Hill Neighborhood Plan. So we're very proud about that. We just learned about that just recently. And right now, currently, we're working in a number of towns and villages right around New Paltz right now. We have work right now in Walk Hill and Middletown, New City, Newburgh, Tarrytown, West Nyack. So we've got a lot going on right now in this area. So, we'd like to try and consolidate, you know, work in an area whenever possible. So I think that works out very well. All of our work really focuses on community interaction. That's something that's basically a specialty of ours. We do a lot of community workshops and design charrettes where the community comes together and brainstorms different design ideas for their community, as well as focus groups or stakeholder meetings. There really isn't a project that we do that doesn't involve some sort of community outreach and a public interaction and so forth. We think that that's really crucial to all the work that we do. Because we like to sort of build these ideas up from a grassroots sort of perspective. And we also do a lot of work with zoning, zoning updates, also form-based zoning codes such as this project, which we're just wrapping up in the town of Pluton Park. We also do a lot of illustrated design guidelines. They're usually, you know, very clear, concise graphics, color, sometimes 3D modeling, because we feel it's sometimes the best way to really convey an idea is through a nice, clear, concise graphic. Because the picture is really worth a thousand words and it really helps to convey what it is that a community is looking for in their work. And also, we take a lot of our planning work and carry it another step into conceptual design. We do a lot of work from the streetscape reconstruction to a new park, which has a wetland and flood storage basin, or a new town hall for Milton. We take these to another level and try to visualize what they might look so the town and the people can help visualize some of these planning things. And then, we then are able to take it another step further, because we're a designing, or planning and design firm. The one particular project we wanted to sort of highlight with you tonight is a work that we've been doing down in New City. They embarked on a mission several years ago to revitalize their main downtown hamlet. And Rebecca is going to sort of walk you through what we did. I think is a good example of our abilities to take, go from very broad planning and visioning all the way through design and construction and realization and making that vision actually get built and come to life. And so I think Rebecca can take it from there.
Thanks, Michael. All right. So this project was, I'm a landscape architect and I work in our downstate office. But originally, this project, this was something that we started as a vision plan. And it started, you know, years ago. Went through the vision planning process. Then it actually kind of turned into the downtown design plan and eventually went into streetscape construction. So, those three, those were the main three tasks. And then, in addition to that, we did do new zoning code and design guidelines for the town so that the public-private collaboration could happen as a result of the, you know, the work and the money that the town was actually putting into this project. So, this actually was the first community workshop down in Clarkstown years ago. And that's kind of where we started with this visioning plan. So with the visioning, we kind of asked the community, well, what do you, you know, what's important to you in this community? And in this one, it was more about the form, the circulation, and the destination. There's, you know, it was a pretty big downtown, but it hadn't been updated in years. So it really needed some attention to those three things. And so, those were kind of the focus groups that came out of the visioning session. So that was what we had used for New City. In another town, it may be different, but this is just an example of some, you know, how you might work to try and kind of find out what the community is looking for and how to kind of organize that into one vision. Because there was a lot of differing opinions on what, you know, the town should focus on. So, this kind of helped us organize those. And then, from there, it turned into, you know, a design development project where we really, we were then hired to do the actual design of the downtown. Putting in those pedestrian walkways, the crosswalks, organizing the street into, you know, the turning lanes and organizing traffic so that it actually flowed better and there was less congestion. So, one of the things that this community had was a center turning lane. And we had a lot of people who were very anxious about getting rid of that turning lane. And what we did was we kind of slowed down traffic and kind of organized it so that it was more pedestrian-friendly. You know, added bus shelters, sight amenity, seating. We had a gazebo in a park that was kind of an anchor point at the end of the street. And that really kind of helped it really pull together. And so, this was just completed this year. It was a very long process. But, you know, that's something where we took the planning process, which was the visioning, and it actually became a reality and turned into something that people use every day now. So I'm just going to run through, these were some of the before and after pictures. One of the biggest problems there was the parking on the street. There was no organization. People kind of just parked haphazardly. So we organized that parking to make it easier for pedestrians to get around and for people to navigate the street and drive, you know, with safety in mind and, you know, keeping generally an idea of, you know, that this is a pedestrian realm. And so, you know, adding the street trees, you know, this is, this is all part of this whole plan. This is what the committee had wanted from the very beginning when we started with the vision plan. Something that, you know, people could walk to, you know, destinations on either end of the street, a park or shopping mall. So this kind of really helped pull it together. This is another before and after. You can barely see a bus shelter in there, but there was a sidewalk that's a very, this was a pretty well-used street. And it just, you know, wasn't conducive to pedestrian use. So, we added, you know, we improved the park and added some, you know, nice elements out on the street that I think a lot of people will, it'll help them slow down, you know, and kind of enjoy the area that they had been, you know. It just needed so many updates over the years. So, this was a huge improvement. And then, this is just showing, you know, we added a lot of benches, street trees. One big thing was the overhead wires, working with the utility companies, getting them to, you know, that was one of the things that had come up from the very beginning in vision planning. And that, you know, they really wanted the wires to go behind the sidewalk, actually, they wanted to underground them. But, you know, we had to kind of weigh these kind of things. And once the construction projects started going through, that was, this was the, you can see that they've been relocated in the backside of the sidewalk. So it's a little bit more organized. All right. So this is just, you know, kind of creating this public realm and then trying to encourage people after, you know, you've put the investment in the public to do private, you know, design coordination. So, Michael's going to talk a little bit about that. You know, some of the property owners along the street that actually revitalized their buildings or are in the process of, as a result of this public infrastructure.
So, you know, in concert, we've gone through this whole business of envisioning a new downtown, revitalizing downtown. It was all really in the public realm. And then, just outside of that, in the private realm, you had a lot of shopping closets such as this or older, worn-down buildings. And we wanted to try and inspire property owners to try and fix up or reinvest in their properties. And so, the next stage of the process, actually, that ran parallel with the design was to develop new zoning for this whole thing that would enable or allow the vision to come true. And so, we worked with property owners in the town to design a new zoning code, which would allow, like, pauses like this were already effectively built out because they had built out to their setbacks and the rest of their property was maxed out with the parking that they were required to have. So we worked out a new scenario and sat down with the owners of some of these plazas and showed them, okay, what we, this is what you could do under the new zoning. So this is that same Radio Shack Plaza, let's say, here. So what we would suggest is, let's say, stage one is sort of a baby step, is they sort of fix up the facade and just do some cosmetic elements, new signage and so forth to dress up the building. And then the next phase would be the town's reconstruction of the street, the new sidewalk, street trees, lighting, and so forth. And then, with the adoption of the zoning, the third and sort of final phase of this would be, they would be able to now build out to the street, bring their building out and face the sidewalk. They would have storefronts right on the sidewalk and create a much more pedestrian-friendly environment, which is what the walkability that we were aiming for. And the developers or the owners of this property loved this. And right now, there's a proposal in for site plan review and so forth to build this, this same building right now. And another example, just about half a mile off the street is another shopping plaza right here. Very sort of old and tired plaza, just parking right in front. And it's really a key intersection of town, high proximity intersection. So what we did is took some computer models and just showed them, in a general sense, how they could phase rebuilding out under the new zoning, build out to the street, tear down the original structure in back, and slowly move their tenants to the front of the street and move all the parking internally. So now they have their buildings out on the street, creating a much more friendly environment, perhaps adding a new, like, public plaza here right across the street from the new park that we had just designed and so forth. And we took that again to the town and to the property owners. And they were very, they loved it. And they started working with their architect. This was the design proposal that they came up with, that they are starting to look toward building. So, in many ways, you know, this is, we like to think of it as sort of cooperative community revitalization. And the public and private working with them, show them what they can do and get them excited. This is essentially what we do. So, in our proposal, you had a very big, a very large RFP, which was looking to do a lot of things. I think what we tried to do was to give you a proposal that was, I think, very targeted and more strategic to getting to the core elements of what I think you really need to be focusing on to try and, I think, be mindful of, you know, the budget. And I think with that, sort of let you guys now talk, open it up to questions, but thank you. Anyone have questions?
I'll go first, then you have a second. All right. You have been talking, you've talked in generality about community involvement. Planning advisory committees to help the IU. What would you see as the composition of that?
Well, it's a good question. You would obviously need representatives from both the village and the town. There are already a lot of committees, as we all know. There's the, you know, the transportation, the bike and pen. There's a lot of committees right now. And I think there would be a way to try and utilize some of the knowledge. We don't want to necessarily start over. There's been such a long history of planning in both of these, in both the village and the town. I wouldn't want to lose any brainpower moving forward. If there's a way to try and pull from that, from some of the other committees, I think that might make some merit. I don't know if people would be burned out, but it's, that's off the top of my head, I would think. I don't necessarily want to start from scratch, maybe one or two new people. But there's a lot of very experienced people out there who've been thinking about these things for a long time.
That's why I'm asking you, how do we pull it together?
Well, typically, I think, just generically, we try to have a committee realistically as small as feasible, you know, just for the number of people, you know. And so it's a joint plan, so you need like representation of both. For the New City project, I think the committee was 11, 12, 13 people, something of that size. And then, see, the main thing is outreach, is getting out to people so that they can engage in the process. But the committee is your steering committee. So, we want enough people to be representative, but it's not meant to be Congress, you know. So, that kind of size. And we would work with you to decide, you know, who. But obviously, you know, represent your main boards, you know, the village board, the town board, and the planning boards reach, and a few others that, you know. And then the others, then work on a process for involving other groups, stakeholders, so that people input to them. So that's really, I think, the main thing. And then, design a process that's based on what the issues are that you want us to tackle. So, it's economic development. Well, obviously, there's a piece there. You've got the locals, you've got players from the county, you've got a college, you've got, you know, saying the state even. But they would be like inputter stakeholders or guides to that. And then, if it's transportation and transit and mobility, well, that same thing, we would have outreach to those folks. So the committee would be like our sounding board.
You're from Saratoga. Have you done a plan for Saratoga?
Yeah, we've done a lot of different things for Saratoga.
Okay. How did you involve Skidmore?
Skidmore College? They were, good question. Let me try to think. Where do we, the last plan, let's see, what's the most recent? You shared a few.
Yeah, really green infrastructure for Saratoga County.
Right, we did.
That was a regional plan, but that involved all of those big players.
We, just trying to think, Skidmore College. We had them, I'm trying to think of what specifically with the college. The only thing, in terms of the college for that community, we had interns working with us on the open space and the trail plans from the college. There's representatives, but...
One thing, the transportation project that we're working on right now with the Greyhound bus, the Trailways Bus Terminal, the first public workshop that we had on that, we held up at SUNY. Because we knew that, A, the college students were a really big component of the ridership. And so, we were afraid that if we had anything in the village or, you know, in... And so we were afraid that if we had anything in the village or, you know, in town, that it would just, the students wouldn't know about it. And so, sorry, students wouldn't know about it. So we were like, when we start this project, we gotta have the first kickoff meeting on the college campus, right in one of their community rooms, and cover the place with posters about it because we wanted to make sure that the students knew about it. Now, by the time those students, by the time we build anything, those students won't be there at school anymore, but it was good to get their insight. So I don't know if that addresses your.
No, that was in a solid, in a different way.
I never were gonna answer you on this question.
This is a joint committee.
Yes.
But there are three communities.
Yes.
The town, the village, and the college. And you have not addressed how you're going to involve them and their impact on us and our impact on them.
Well, I think that one of the things that we would do, I don't think we're gonna, we would ever be able to do a project of this, you know, magnitude with just one meeting. I think you would have to have multiple community meetings. And perhaps it would make sense that you have one community meeting in the town of New Paltz, one community meeting in the village, and one community meeting at the college. And then perhaps these are not necessarily tailored just to those three audiences, but it's an opportunity to make it convenient and focus on those, on those areas. So I think that would be probably how I would, I would approach it. But you're right, there are essentially three communities.
I had to guess that you integrate all three.
Yeah, absolutely, and there's a lot of ways to do that, there's a lot of practical ways. And we're, I don't, hope you don't think that we're gonna, we're ignoring the powers, but they're, they're a key stakeholder, right? But they have no man-use decision-making, they're, they have their own independent decision-making. But for example, as a resource, the college, you know, from an economic department point of view, those folks are a great resource. I was actually thinking we can, we've done a lot of work with students, I mean, I taught, I taught planning at SUNY in Albany for many years, and a lot of students, let me tell you, we love involving college students within, within Rees, oh yeah, a lot of our projects. So I see a lot of cooperative opportunities in a project like this, to involve the college and the students, professors, you know.
Let me, let me call upon Sally, I mean, actually, I think Sally, it's for these two boards to decide how we want us to constitute the committee and what role we want the college to have in it. So it's not for them to answer, it's for us to answer. However, listening to you speak though, you know, is my sense, and if I'm wrong, correct me please, is that I don't get the sense that you really think that the college per se should be in that driving committee because their needs, desires, and how they operate is independent, so you don't really, if I hear you right, I don't think you're saying that they should actually be in the driving, steering committee.
They, that would be.
Institutionally, not individually.
No, no, and I think, you know, they, a lot of ways, in some ways, it's like if you were the county and, you know, like the new city project, the county was at the table, partly because we saw them as a partner implementing, so they want them on board. But, no, these policies are gonna be your policies, the town knows your fiscal policies, all kinds of things, they have a different set of operating principles. That being said though, there's a lot, I mean, in the college town, we've done a lot of college town work, like in Pastham, we did the whole revitalization of Pastham, downtown, the riverfront, all that, we had four college professors helping us out, had students involved, there's a lot of opportunity to engage the college in a lot of different ways in a project like this. But I do think that there's a different function, you guys have a different view of fiduciary responsibility, your community, your taxpayers, et cetera, and so we're cognizant of that.
One, at dinner tonight, we were brainstorming ideas and one thing that John had suggested was, in looking at the RFP, there was an element in there of sort of the economic analysis and, and you have the business, you know, the business school, and would there be an opportunity to engage students directly in the process by using it as like an opportunity for them to do like a special project where they're doing actual hands-on research and analysis of the New Paltz community, which would work on this project and they would be getting real-life experience in. So that was just, that would be another way to maybe engage the college.
I was thinking more of impact on each other.
Okay.
You're quite right, it's like the fiduciary responsibility, but there are many actions taken by that independent body that impact both the village and the town. And I often thought that part of our problem is we don't talk enough and we don't show enough the impact that they have economically on the two governments for providing the services.
Correct.
And if they are more a part of the process, the value of the impact is greater and the greater understanding. If I don't, you know, if I'm allowed to live independently and I don't have to think about you or what I do on you, that's how it's gonna be. But we all live in the community and it seems to me that there has to be a cross-reference in terms of impact and understanding of the impacts.
Certainly, things at the college does impact the town engagement, so.
Of which they notify us none of, they've just removed probably over 600 parking spaces without notifying and holding their sequel hearings up in Albany. So I think I concur a little more with where Susan's thinking is, the college does what's good for the college and not for the community. So my interest isn't as much as having them be part of our conversation, and I apologize, John, this is, let me never say, but I see what you're saying, Sally, but it just, the college does what's good for the college.
This is for.
They do need to be part of the discussion. I think one question I do have, and I apologize if anyone else had one, but is that we did do, and I knew I recognized you because I saw you down here a few, I'm like, why do I recognize that guy? You were down here for some of the village pieces.
Yes.
So I appreciate it, and I didn't realize you had done all of that work here, so thank you. But the, we've done a master plan, I don't know if you saw a part of that, but a few years ago in the town.
Yes.
So we do have quite a lot of stakeholder information, that, would that be part of your plan also?
Absolutely, there's a lot of information, it's 300 pages, right, the town.
It's two, in my opinion, it's 250 pages of garbage and about 50 pages of, and it's actually really good background data. Most of it unfortunately is unusable.
Yeah, well.
50,000 notes later.
So I think, we know in human nature a certain extent, there's a lot we don't know. And what I, I think, if you think about what we do, is we're very opportunistic, strategic about finding alliances and partnerships and how to make, make things happen. But we, our plans, a good plan, a really good plan has to have three things, if I may. It has to have, first of all, it has to have leadership. And, you know, you have to have leadership because without leadership you can't get anything done, really you can't. Behind leadership, you need the public, the community behind you, and a strong process that will carry on over the years. And the third thing is you have to have a really good plan. And I think that's what we do. And what I'm proud of is, is that our plans, like that plan for Albany, the Arbor Hill that was a great name, that was done in 2003. And so I'm proud of it because I knew that was a great plan and a transformational plan for that community. And we were really hard on making that plan really sacred to those folks. And they've done a great job in the community, they've done amazing, amazing things. And that's the kind of work that we get excited about. And so here, I do think there's some opportunities, you know the community, we see some opportunities downtown, we see opportunities of nature going right through there. We, we see a lot of things that you guys can build on, and the college is one of them. And as, and maybe part of what we do is, we reshape the conversation a little bit about not being a reactionary with the college doing, but getting out front and saying, here's how we can, here's some things you can do with us, for us. The Peace Park is a good little example because, remember Jason, we talked, we found some funding, we got some funding, we got the phone, we said DC has some money, we actually helped get some money, the college had a great going on, it doubled out perfectly just to have that conversation.
And that's what I was talking about.
Yeah, and so.
The conversation has to occur.
And there's a lot of it up in, up in, we worked in Henrietta, there's RIT, and they have a whole tech development opportunity. We worked in Burlington, we do a lot of college town work, Burlington, Vermont, great, great town, and they had a college, one big thing is understanding the college master plan, what that is, and getting out in front of that, you're right? And that's a big piece. And there are some things, I think, what should we get ahead of, get, you know what I'm saying, our hand in the town's plan, in the village's plan, it does, from a regulatory and kind of partnership point of view, is their, their plan ought to fit, you know, there's a way to make that work, you know, and so there's certain things like inside the campus they can do, now it's, I actually wrote a whole code for Burlington, which is based on the college plan, et cetera. Some of us, not all of it got adopted because I was, was a little too, we pushed the envelope as far as we could. I think the, the bottom line message is, we look, like the last slide, we look for partnerships and collaboration, that's what we do, we wanna build those, build those up. And so, that's sort of, you know.
Let me ask you a question about your experience with joint intermunicipal agreement and the.
It's a nightmare.
I'm gonna video machine.
That wrench is on.
Randy, Randy needs the probable nightmare character. What is the single most difficult intermunicipal agreement, or not agreement, plan that you had to work on? And how did you effect, as, you know, as consultants, you can't make the things happen, but how did you effect a plan and planning process that enabled the, a more difficult situation to.
These are tough questions.
Work out better.
That's a, that's a good question. I, I think, I'm not sure that intermunicipal is always the stumbling, the stumbling block. I think that sometimes, I think where we've had the biggest challenge is with big committees. We worked with a committee, I won't name the town, not far away from here, but we worked with a committee of almost 20 people. And nobody on the committee liked each other or battled along or agreed with each other, and it was almost impossible to get them to move forward on any of these things. And, and that, that was probably one of our biggest challenges. Did somebody just guess the name?
Here's your voice, Tom.
So I mean, I mean, one of the, the project that we worked on in New City that Rebecca was showing us, that was joint town and county, which is, I think, that went relatively well. I was probably mostly shielded from, from the gunfire than you were, but I think it went pretty well.
I think that one was helped a lot by the fact that we did get a federal grant, and so the town had, you know, a certain amount of money set aside for the project. And so that really kind of helped kickstart it and then get the county kind of going. I mean, the county, the county was running a project at the same time, and so that was my most difficult problem because they were running a construction project that was perpendicular to ours. And so that caused problems, like mostly PR problems, because we never knew, you know, who was calling on what and that kind of thing. But, I mean, as far as working with municipalities together on that, I mean, it really, you know, they seemed to, they worked out very well together. I mean, there was, you know, we actually had more issues, I'd say, with the agencies, you know, and that's not the level that we're, you know, talking about here. So, I mean, the, my experience has been pretty positive, I'd say, so.
There's a couple, I think the biggest issue is a fundamental issue though, is the issue of trust. And I, trust is a core issue, it's also a higher, it's obviously a problem, we see like communities that can't, and, and let me think of projects that we worked on where that issue is always there, you know, whether it's college, downtown, village, village county, county state, there's neighborhoods, communities, the city. The Arbor Hill plan was in a, was in a core community, they didn't trust the city, you know, they didn't trust the cops, they didn't trust the process, they didn't trust that we, we could listen to them, you know. So I, to me, it's really, for our philosophy, if you would, is, is, is almost like an honest musician's call, so we put our best work forward in an honest effort to listen and put ideas forward in an honest way. How, if you were the community, you all respond to that, is that's, we can't control that. And I think what we can do is just do our best. Sometimes that song is a hit and it's great and other times it's not, and you gotta battle it out and, and battle up in the mayday, you have to figure out how to get it through, get, build that trust, and so, that's something that we can.
What was the word that you used when you said, when Sally asked the question and you said, what was the word you used?
Fiduciary?
No, 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 no.
Nightmare.
Nightmare. So, so.
Right.
Being that I agree with you, but that's a true statement, why would you want this project?
Well, it's good, we, we, we laugh about it, we laugh about it, but.
No, I think what it comes down to is not necessarily that you have a joint jurisdiction thing with a town and a village, it comes down to who's the personalities that you're, you're working with. We already know one of them, he's, you know, but. Thanks, Michael.
That wasn't good in that, was it?
No, New, we like New Paltz because you guys are generally a pretty progressive town and you're open to, I think, more creative ideas and a lot of other communities are that are just sort of stuck in, let's just do what's the engineer numbers tell us and what's safe. And we're more, I think, open to thinking, I think, of much more creative and experimental ideas. And I, I kind of, I kind of like that.
Don't you know that the more, the more progressive you are, the more you should each other?
What happened to you today? What's going on?
Too long of a day, I think.
Negative this whole mission.
That's not intended, huh?
What is going on?
It's just my reality of dealing with this community.
That's not real, you're making reality.
No, I'm not making reality, I'm sorry.
Tom, Susan's, let me get the gavel.
He said it, not me.
No, no, we, we, it's not an easy road and that's where the leadership comes in. I really think if they get down to some simple ideas where we can reach, you know, let's work on this together, that's always about, and at the end of the day, it comes down to projects really that you can do, right? I mean, and so.
And projects that you can get people excited about.
Right.
That is often where your leadership and your public support comes from. You can envision something that gets people really excited, hey, I really love this new idea for new transit-oriented development right here, then that gets the public support and it's very easy to lead that and carry that through and it keeps its momentum. That's where we like, because the design side comes in and helping to visualize that, that's work we enjoy.
Well, I, you know, New Paltz is 14,000 member community and 14,000 different opinions. So it's all about good for you to say that and the bus station is a very interesting object because this community is divided on that topic. There are people who want it to stay where it is and there are people who understand that for what needs to be done, it can't be done.
So, yeah, well.
Okay, so, which way should we go?
That's what we'll help you with, that's what we'll help you with.
And, sorry, John, any other questions for folks from Dehane?
No, I, I just wanna think though, with Sally, you know, and I, New City, I've been down there and they have very, you know, New City's a good example, I know there, is it, the end of the one, I think it's Hitor is the one park north of it or west? And then there's another big one with a lake, I don't think I've ever been to.
Rockland Lake.
Rockland Lake, it's down to the south. So anyway, it's a very interesting community because they have a lot of very green space to keep protected and they probably had 30, it's actually a.
It's a very different community.
And you have some very different cultures in that community too, very distinct cultures.
Other world of, of personalities.
Yeah, and there's a very deep religious culture there that is very separate from other parts of it. And I'm actually, I, so, and also thank you for rebuilding it because I have a friend down there just outside, and I didn't realize you guys had rebuilt that, it's actually, so like, and I think that's what Sally's getting at is, like, the vision, and I'm just gonna again refer to their new city, I think that's a vision we could all see of our main street of New Paltz just because of our population growth. We're not gonna be at 33,000, but certainly, you know, that is a very common goal we need. We need, how do we ignore that boundary of the village-town and make that, you know, main street into a very big wide. And by the way, I'm sorry, I do want my utilities buried, we've only been trying to do this since the 70s, but yeah, sorry, I still want, I think these guys would like them buried too, but I know, I know it's not, I know it's not possible, but it's what we like.
Million dollars a mile.
How much?
A million dollars a mile.
A million dollars a mile, there you go. Cut the check.
That would, we could have done main street, a million dollars.
I mean, there were so many people that went back and forth on that, I mean, people wanted, you know, the underground and then, it really, we had to.
Here's the thing, this is the practical side of us, we, and this is Cynthia being, came up with this really cool solution, which is, you know, it's not a million dollars a mile, it's like multiples of that, but because we don't control the cost, it's all the utilities and they just bill you basically. But we, you know, we, we said, if we move them back away from the turnpike, in this case, back, you actually, you meet a beautiful stream of lights and plants and all this, and you know what? They pay for everything, utility company get all that moving, because when you move you pay, unless you're underground.
But because of the way we did it, the utility basically had to.
It goes back to the opposite, it goes over at Cross and all that.
That was a really nice solution.
For like a quarter of a million dollars, they essentially mostly disappeared and we got something done, you know, and I think we're very practical about that, about getting things done.
Right, but I do think that. Right, but I do think that, I mean, not everybody was happy with that. I mean, there's still people that wanted to see them underground. But the majority of people kind of understood, you know, the decisions that the town made, and I think, you know...
And I think as plans are changing, I guess the other question I didn't ask the other ones about, I'll ask you is, how do you work into the ever-present tax cap, which probably is never going anywhere into the plans?
Well, that's a big, that's a big issue, right, the tax cap? So I would say with, it's really back to you on what, what are you doing, what are you, I guess one thing is grow the tax base. You know, that helps, right? That's a big thing. But that's not gonna solve your costs today. Sometimes, frankly, you have to bite the bullet and invest in yourselves and do something about that. Hate to say it, not now, but you have to have a compelling enough vision. You guys voted to tax yourselves open space. We worked with you on that, and everybody, you know. Not everybody was behind it, but when you get sixty-seven percent or fifty percent of people to vote for something, when you're voting to tax something, that's a pretty cool result, you know, something worked there. All of us, I think, that pay taxes are always concerned that am I getting any value for my investment? That's really the big issue, right?
I think, though, for New Paltz, part of it is more the affordability of being able to stay here. And so many people can't afford to stay here anymore, that, you know, that's the bigger issue in a way, is how to do the visioning that we want to do, be able to be doing it in a way where people can, for everything costs money. You know, I mean, it's even like with the open space, which we all did vote for, that was prior to the cap. Now we're in a situation where, you know, we have fifty-five thousand dollars in our budget for principal, sixteen thousand dollars, you know, in interest for the land we've bought. Now we're looking to buy more land, you know, and another fifty-five thousand in principal, another sixteen. And now all of a sudden, you're looking at a tax cap, and all of a sudden, that seventy-eight thousand dollars that you're putting into your budget, you know, which is all of a sudden, you know, it's like, where does the money come, you know? Then you get hit with a quarter of a million dollar police retirement thing, you know, so it's...
Or you get hit in Town Hall.
Exactly, okay, which we're dealing with. So in a sense, I mean, these are now bigger issues, which, you know, we'll have to grapple with. You know, there's no doubt about that, but you know, these are real issues now, that are more real now, because of the cap and just because people are at this point where they just can no longer afford it. And we all know the middle class is disappearing and, you know...
Right, so, I, you know, and that's, so, one thing, you know, and you guys are starting on this now, having worked on it, is one thing you can do something about is energy costs, you know, to some degree, or energy conservation. Because it's costing more and more and more just to, you know, pay for the gas, your heat, your electric, and all that. So I was just talking about, I worked in a city in this, in Omaha, in the late seventies, right up that the National Geographic did a special on our town, that we had a Pittsburgh action to conserve energy. We concerned, we did home improvements and energy reduction, reduced energy costs for homeowners in the thirty-plus percent range for pennies on the dollar, you know, going in and out. It's, you know, weatherproof windows, low insulation roofs, doing audit, and that type of thing throughout the whole community. And so those are the kind of things that a community can offer itself. You know, you worked with my sir and others, reduce your real costs. You've got to invest in yourselves. I understand it's important, and I'm not saying this, but, you know, if all boats rise, and you have to be, that's the leadership part. I'm not saying what that project is or what the funding is.
How are you guys about getting CFA grants and chasing grants to actually help implement the plans that we're trying to come up with? Do you guys have...
We've been doing a lot of the CFA grants that have been coming through the last, like, two years, but we've gotten...
Millions. We've written, I stopped counting. We're in, you know, we're probably, tens and tens of millions of dollars of grants. Everything from, you know, not counting just financing, having, we're probably fifty million dollars in grants.
And do you see, as you work with us to do this master plan, building in opportunities for us to be able to go get grants to continue moving forward?
Not only that, we are, I have a stat, we are by far, I don't think, but there's a, I don't think there's a better grant writer at something than us. And we are, we are a tremendous track record. And part of it is because we don't write grants, we only help communities implement our plans. So we, and so that's why we can hit them all apart, because we know how to, you know. First of all, we know what you need. We know what your priorities are. Often, and I may brag a little bit, we're often ahead of the agencies with ideas. So we've, I've, we've written, developed plans and programs and projects that we're ahead of or ready to when the agencies are coming out with projects. I'm giving three quick examples. POSDAM, we did an economic development strategy for POSDAM, County State. We found it interesting, the biggest issue with POSDAM, stunting economic growth, was a lack of a good, affordable childcare facility. So we wrote a grant to hunt, a comprehensive grant, we had to fix up houses and did some infrastructure work. And we built through the, with the Positive Daycare nonprofit, on the school property, which donated a plan for one dollar, built a brand-new childcare facility to help single-headed households, the folks in childcare, get back to work. So, and we were out ahead of curve. This is the first project funded like that in the state. We were the number-one rated grant application, you know, in the state. When we, when we did the visioning for Pittford, they re-created. We created a fire protection program before the state and federal government had one. So we had a plan and program in place. We had seven projects ready to go. No one even was talking, they were talking about it. We had seven projects that were fully funded with state and federal grants, millions and millions of dollars. So that's where we, you know, I said three, but like... You know, so that's where we, you know, that's, I mean, you can see that where we, you know, we are, and we're...
Well, I would say West Nyack would be another one, down in, near New City, Cards Town. A small hamlet, West Nyack was a nice old historic hamlet, but it was having, it was just getting flooded, worse and worse every year. And we were doing a vision plan there, and everybody said, don't bother fixing up our hamlet because it floods every, you know, twice a year. And so we stepped back and said, okay, well, what can we do about flooding? And we worked out with the town, they have a little town park that nobody uses. It was built with volunteer labor, nobody uses it. And so we talked to the town about, okay, what can we do? There's a wetland behind it. Can we redesign this whole wetland area back here, turn it into a park with trails? You know, dredge it out so it can have a storage capacity to handle all the floodwater, build a new park that people might actually go to, and wrote a grant application and got grant, I don't know exactly how much, but grant funding to build that. We're right now in the process of designing that. And then, so that was basically like a park slash wetland storage facility, but designing it in such a way that it's, it looks more like a wetland natural pond that you'd want to walk around, something like that. So we're kind of trying to do two, two things at once here, solve their flooding problem, fix up the community.
Right there alone, in that neighborhood, we have, that was a million-dollar grant under the Environmental Facilities Corporation Green Innovative Grant Program. And we also got a public, a transportation enhancement program grant to do the sidewalks for two-point-three million dollars. And we also have a hazard mitigation grant to do additional flood storage of three-point-nine, three-point-two million dollars. And we got a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar grant from DASI, the Doritorial Authority, believe it or not, Doritorial Authority funding source, to build a park and playground, and there might be another one out there. That's just that one little part of this one town. Because they invested in the plan, and they have leadership and...
Yeah, and I think, I think it's important also to note that that project that's being funded now is going on simultaneously while the streetscape design is being done. So I mean, while the grant money is being secured for that project, and that's going, you know, separately, we can still focus on the streetscape portion. So it's almost like fighting off pieces that, you know, are feasible, that can be funded, and then finding ways to...
They can go in parallel, as Rebecca just said, they can go in parallel. So if you're working on a master plan, and you know, okay, looking ahead, we're gonna need to have something in place up here, we can start maybe getting, putting the wheels in motion for a grant farther down the road, so something like that can hit, and I don't know how you time it, but something like that can be done. It wouldn't necessarily have to be work, 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 stop, wait a year for a grant, then work, work, work. Because you don't want to, you don't want to lose that continuity and that momentum. And also, I think another way of trying to sort of build revenue and tax bases, just with like one or two like key focused projects that could get people excited, like, as your RFP alludes to, the like transit-oriented development. If you were to have like a key project like that, act as sort of a catalyst. For instance, perhaps maybe you have a TOD node in the village and a TOD node in the town, and that sort of links the two, but those act as like a redevelopment catalyst. So you design a concept for developers to come in and put in new, you know, housing and retail mixed-use part of the TOD plan. That helps to increase the property values and tax revenues and so forth. So I think it starts with a key project, rather than trying, so focus on one, one thing that you can do really well, rather than, I think, trying to collect a little bit everywhere.
Any other questions?
Why do you guys want to do this project together?
Why?
Why?
Do you have a lead?
Because of...
We're supposed to have a plan, and we figured we'd hire someone.
But together, you know, because a lot of...
It's good that it's together.
I mean, the first step that we have taken, now we've gotten much better about having joint meetings and talking about joint problems. But prior to, two years ago, that wasn't happening at all. We know that we have common community problems. We need a common zoning code that is going to be beneficial to both of us. And collaboration is always better than independent, flying on your own, which is only going to cost the taxpayers more and more. So that's why.
I can answer it for myself, because despite all the problems and issues and the negativity, which I think is real, and whatever, however, despite that, the truth of the matter is, I've always said, when I came back to the town, Jeff had worked on a comprehensive plan for a long time, but nowhere. And I said, from my perspective, I would never do a comprehensive plan that was just for the town outside the village, because that's not a comprehensive plan. Because at the end of the day, we are one community, whether we like to believe it or not. And that to do a comprehensive plan and leave, you know, the donut, you know, like, you know, donut leave the middle out, it's not a comprehensive plan. So I said I would never engage in a comprehensive plan unless we were planning together as a community. While I understand it makes it more difficult, and I think it's gonna be a lot harder, I still think the work is worth it, because at the end of the day, we are one community, you know, and despite how much we fight or whatever, you know, most of us believe that the village is the core and the, you know, open space needs to be preserved, and we're only gonna do it if we do it together. So despite the fact that I think it's a disaster or whatever you said, I'm... It's the right, it's the right thing, it's the right thing. No, but I, I believe, but we thought for enough together to know that it can be a nightmare, so you know what? But I just do believe at the end of the day, it's the right thing for the community. So like the person before us had said, take the good, the bad, and the ugly.
Yeah.
You know, and so, yes, you know, we're sitting here willing, some of us to take the good, the bad, and the ugly, because we believe it's the right thing for the community, and so therefore, as leaders, that's what we do.
That's very good. It's not too similar, we're just sort of, we're working right now with the town of Walk Hill and the city of Middletown. I don't know if you know the geography, but...
I know the supervisor, and...
The, did you hear?
I've met him, yes.
Yeah, he's a fun guy.
Yes.
The town of Walk Hill surrounds the city of Middletown, and the town of Walk Hill, we got, we wrote a grant application, got a grant to do hazard mitigation plan. And, but we had to, at the very beginning, it was just the town of Walk Hill. And we were like, to do a hazard mitigation plan, but leave out the donut in the middle, didn't make any sense considering a lot of flooding problems were in the city. And so we went to the city, and we had to twist their arm, literally, to be, to sign on to do this too, and to cough up, you know, their share of the grant, so that we could all do it as a joint-based out, because we felt that that was the, that was the best way to do it.
But because they did that...
Oh, yes.
Well, they, they were one of the communities that got three million dollars for New York Rising. You know, they might have got, they each got three million, you know, for New York Rising, and maybe they would have gotten it. I don't think they would have gotten it.
We haven't got our thank you card yet from the city of Middletown to say thank you for the three million dollars if we would have totally walked away.
Money for a card.
We haven't got our thank you card yet, but...
I promise you, we'll get you one.
Using our calendars in your calendar is nice enough from us. And it wasn't a compliment, actually.
All right, the card, I'm still here.
All right, any other questions for Behan planning?
One is, yeah, where did you guys get that picture? Because I want to thank you for using it.
We got a couple of these, actually.
I want to say that picture absolutely exemplifies what our master plan is about, is...
This is what we were just talking about.
Were you really? Oh, it's, well, not the river, but it's just, it's what's important, it's the core. And why, you asked a great question, is why do we want a joint master plan? Is because we all do, sitting here, do understand we have a core. And then we have, the jewel of our community is everything to the west of the Walk Hill, the mountains, the open space. We have very limited resources. We have, the easy land to develop is long since gone. And we have sensitive areas. And our planning board and their planning board cannot lean back on a plan right now and say, it's in our master plan. And it's very difficult to defend zoning decisions if you don't have an effective master plan. Our current master plan is a piece of, well, it's not that great. The one we had written many years ago in the town is a piece of garbage, and we need to get somewhere. And I know Jason, this board would like to have a bit of, their planning board would be able to lean back and say, here's our master plan. This is why we're not going to do that. Or we're going to jeopardize what we're all here for. So where did you get the picture?
Well, I'll tell you, this is a great picture. This is a great, thank you for that great segue, because this is a little bit about who we are. We decided to get the plane and get up and not just talk to people. We got up a plane and hired a pilot and a photographer to fly...
Not for this interview, but for the audience.
No, that's...
He just flew it, because that was...
I told him, I told him, I mean...
He had to be taken off the table, so...
I got this one. Fucking boat.
Well, if you send it to Dan, if you send that picture to Dan, he'll have it on Facebook.
I'll move that. You're voting.
New York, New York Rising.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna finish the meeting here.
Folks!
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
Outside if you're talking. I'm talking to you, Behan and Zealor.
So you made a motion, was that...
I made a motion that the town, to allow the town, that the town would...
To authorize the town to be the separate, separate...
The agreement of the New York Rising.
New York Rising Agreement on behalf of the town and the village.
And I'd like to make the same motion on behalf of the town.
All right, so is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll second for the town.
Because now we get the people, if they have to sign anything, we'll just take care of it.
The only thing we have to decide is when we're gonna talk about the interviews.
Yeah, what's our next, or what's your next step?
Right now.
Yeah, it's way too late now.
I'd like to meet in the next two weeks, if that's possible.
How about next Wednesday at our village board meeting?
Because that's not enough time to notice, is it?
That's enough time, that's a week.
Maybe ten days.
And could we have Rebecca and Gene and Kevin, will you make three discs for them to watch the interviews?
It's also on YouTube.
It's online, I'll make them, so I can make them this.
Okay.
Do you want to make...
No, I think they should.
Can we make this a formal then for next Wednesday, and you want to give us the time?
If they have not seen the...
Should we do it before or... Just, I don't know how long we need, what?
This is available online, is what you're saying.
I think it's not just...
These are all on YouTube.
It's also gonna be about how we're formally committed.
Well, I don't care how they do it, but I want to make sure they do it.
I think I'd like to...
Because if they haven't, Dan, I don't think they should be allowed.
No, I, I hear you, yeah.
All right, one thing at a time. When should we meet? Next Wednesday at the regular board meeting, or should we meet earlier and do it? Should we meet before the village board meeting?
We could do a six meeting, again, I didn't, I thought those...
Well, I'd like to suggest we do it at seven. I think we can do it at seven, because we have a special personnel. And I would like to recommend if we do it at seven-thirty, Jeff probably has...